I'd like to call this meeting of the Willet City Council to order on February 27. And first we'll do the call to order and now the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a great and just a world.
Your call.
Ladies and members, Connie here, Friday here, Stan here, Mary here.
So ladies and gentlemen, the next order would be public communication, but I also want to tell you that other public matters, we're going to be presenting some public service awards to a couple gentlemen who did some really good, really good things. But just so you know what's coming next. So, public communication, the council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. Text five I matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that the spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to items under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council commission, boards, agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. And again, just try to educate everybody that because it's not on the agenda, if you came up and said, hey, how come my pothole on my street wasn't filled? We're going to listen to you and we'll maybe give direction to staff and we're not going to have a discussion with you. So I kind of use that as a teaching moment there. At this point, if anybody from the public would like to come up and speak to something not on the agenda, I welcome you to come up.
I am Susan Gregory, and I have macular degeneration, and I have to walk everywhere. I have been asking Caltrans to fix the sound on the car, by the car wash, and I have not been able to get any results. It is very hard to see the light, especially during the summer. I would like to see if someone can help me. We have tech steam and everything, but nothing has worked. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to ask, Christopher, can you get her information?
Yeah.
Thank you. We can follow up.
Anybody else that would like to speak to anything not on the agenda? Going, going, gone, okay. Well, now at this point, we're going to item 3A, presentation of public service awards to Sheldon Lund, Lance Armstrong, Austin Barhite, and Joseph Delara. I was told Mr. Lund would not be in attendance, but his mother is here and she would accept on his behalf. And this matter was brought forward by councilwoman and Ms. Mad Strong, and so I want her to do the presentations since she's got some firsthand knowledge here.
Okay. Well, I'll start up here. I just wanted to, I experienced a fire on the block where I live, and it gave me a lot of empathy for people who've gone through fires everywhere in this county and California. Because one, just one house on fire is just totally gets to you, you know, it's just shocking. And so the house very near mine was on fire, and a bunch of us gathered across the street. But four young men who lived within a few houses stepped up, found their way there immediately. Sheldon Lund was, I think, the first one on the, on the scene, and he immediately went to rescue the woman who lived there, who's a 90-year-old, I believe. And without his help, she might not have made it out, because he broke down the front door, she was struggling to find her way there, the house was starting to fill with smoke. So he showed incredible bravery to just break down that door, go and help her get down the stairs. The other three gentlemen helped on that, and they also immediately went to the neighbors and started applying water to the neighboring houses so they wouldn't catch fire. I was just really impressed with their presence of mind and their bravery, so I asked that we give them a recognition and thank them. And I understand maybe at least one of them might be interested in going into firefighting, so we sure need them. So I am really proud to present these awards. I'll come down there and you can come forward and pick up your ones. So on behalf of Sheldon Lund, would his letter come up? And? Okay. I think I will give to Kathy. Kathy Lawrence was the immediate neighbor, and her house had a little bit of damage, but nothing like it would have been. If they weren't there, it hadn't been. Joseph Delara. Thank you. I know that Vance Armstrong is not in town, so that again, Kathy, if you could get these to them.
Sure, you bet.
Yeah, Kathy, Kathy. And on behalf of the city of Willet, and anybody else in your neighborhoods, if you are heads up, if you see something happening, go and be helpful, call Landline and Road Service. We have a wonderful fire department, but volunteers helping is, is great. But thank you, Christopher. Our fire department was there in force, as was Brook Trail's assistance too, so thank you very much.
It's kind of nice to have good news for a change. Usually you just hear bad news, so, all right. Well, now we're out to item 3B, discussion and staff direction regarding possible or potential changes to the city's cannabis ordinance in light of changes to the industry and to state regulations.
I want to ask Dusty to come up here for that one. Dusty Julie is our community development director, and he and I are working on this report, and he will be tag teaming this one. Dusty's going to start this one off.
Yeah. Good evening, mayor, council members. Our favorite topic, cannabis, once again.
Can't hear the guy sitting in the back.
Yeah, all right, I'll speak up, no problem. Just, just very quickly, what you have in front of you is an agenda summary report, as well as a copy of the existing cannabis ordinance for the city of Willet's. The council recalls approving the medical cannabis ordinance, establishing chapter 17.85 of our Willet zoning code in September of 2017, exactly 17 months ago. The ordinance permitted medical cannabis indoor cultivation, nurseries, manufacturing, using both volatile or non-volatile solvents, as well as limited volatile solvents, the type six and type seven licenses, as the state refers to them. Distribution, infusion, testing labs, research, packing and processing, as well as up to three dispensaries to include delivery services. To date, the department has received 24 cannabis activity permits, three packing and processing, nine distribution, six manufacturing, one infusion, and five cultivation permits. The 24 total applications represent $268,989 in application fees. It's estimated about $3 million in construction improvements have occurred in the city to support the businesses. I wish I did have some data on any job creation that has occurred to this point. Our ordinance does state that all permittees of any authorized medical cannabis activity shall account for job creation in the city and shall commit to employ a workforce that resides in the local area. Permittees shall use good faith efforts to comply with this substitution. I'm reading the, the actual regulation verbatim. And shall report the residential composition of their workforce to the community development director every year. So as our permittees come up for renewal after one year of businesses, they will be reporting that information to me, and I certainly will be anxious to share that with the council. It's not a surprise to be back in, in, in front of here. It's not because the ordinance hasn't, we've had issues or, or oversights. Rather, there's been a lot of changes at the state level. The state continues to try to figure out how to properly regulate the cannabis industry, and in turn, the industry is constantly trying to figure out how to adhere to the regulations that are changing at the state level. Based on some of the changes that have happened at the state level, our ordinance is now inconsistent with the state law. For instance, our ordinance references state businesses and professional code sections that no longer exist. It speaks to, it references the State Department of Public Health when applicable regulations are now under the Bureau of Cannabis Control. Our ordinance requires 30 days of retaining security footage, whereas the state requires 90 days. So staff would like to take the opportunity to look through our ordinance and make those, those relatively straightforward changes so that we do have an ordinance that is consistent with, with the state regulations. A bigger discrepancy in our ordinance has to do with delivery services. The council previously authorized up to three retail outlets, dispensaries, to operate within the city. Only those three retail outlets were allowed to actually have a delivery service to provide a delivery of medical cannabis to customers inside the city limits of Willet's. State law has changed and now supersedes that limitation that we have in our ordinance. Essentially, even a jurisdiction that completely prohibits cannabis, anyone that holds a proper state license can deliver cannabis, medical or adult use, to a customer inside Willet's. Staff suggests that, that we revise the ordinance to be consistent with state law and further that we figure out a process for tracking and taxing delivery services within Willet's. I don't know if recognizing that our authority to limit the spent delivery services in Willet's, the council may want to consider allowing folks to establish a delivery license outside of a dispensary, but that's just something that, that you guys can consider. Another big change at the state level is licensees may now engage in commercial cannabis activities with any license, regardless if it's an A adult or M medical license. More, more information on that specific change is in your agenda summary. This, this lack of distinction at the state level, in many ways, makes our limitation on medical cannabis unenforceable. The city was relying on this, heavily on the state with their permitting and tracking system to maintain the distinction. I'm glad to say that we have a Ms. Elizabeth Lance with us today. She is a, an experienced lawyer that amongst other matters assists clients understanding state cannabis rules and regulations. We're paying her, so please feel free to ask her questions. We've also received an under requested changes from our cannabis applicants, as well as prospective cannabis applicants. They are interested in ordinance being amended to allow for both medical and recreational licenses. Many of them are here tonight, and I'll let them articulate the reasons for the request. We've also received a number of requests to allow for a full type seven manufacturing facilities to operate within the city. Again, this is a facility that typically extracts cannabis oil from raw cannabis plant. Right now, we allow for type six license, which, which allows the use of non-volatile solvents to make those oils, as well as the limited use of volatile solvents, essentially ethanol, under a limited type seven license. According to our industry folks, to make a superior product, you need to be able to make use of solvents that are only permitted with the approval of a full type seven license. Our Little Lake Fire Department Fire Chief Chris Wilks is, is here, and you may want to talk to him about some of the issues as far as the dangers and the precautions that you can take to make sure that, that those operations are done safely. We also have a request from some of our folks to operate both a cultivation nursery and a cultivation grow on the same property. Our ordinance currently limits you to have one cultivation license per legal parcel. So if you hold a license to cultivate up to 10,000 square feet or 22,000 square feet of canopy, we're not allowed to also issue a nursery license. I don't know if that was an oversight on our part when we first went through this, or if there is interest in the council supporting both a nursery, which is a type of cultivation license to occur on the same property as an actual mature cultivation garden. The other inquiry that I've gotten multiple times is if you allow, if the city allows for a cultivation site, again, everything has to be indoors within a fully enclosed and secure structure. If they allow a 22,000 square foot garden, why wouldn't we allow for two 10,000 square foot permits from different entities? So that, that was something else that, that's been brought up over the past 17 months. Oh, and our, I looked at our city manager because she, she was, she turned me on to this one. Questioning whether or not the council wants to amend the ordinance to specifically allow the sale of cannabis products that are designed to be consumed or for the treatment of animals. And, yeah. So, so again, the recommendation is to provide us guidance. At a minimum, we'd like to go ahead and, and clean up the ordinance to make it consistent with state law, but further staff's here to take any direction you want to give us as far as providing further revisions to the ordinance to bring back at a later date for, for council consideration.
Before we open it up up here, I did want to ask two questions. One is a fire chief, just a specific one. Have we had any issues with any of our applicants? And as long as I've got you up here regarding volatile versus not.
Sure. As of now, we've, with all the applicants, and we're mostly talking about the manufacturing part of things, all occupancies we've looked at for public safety and occupant safety of the buildings. Everybody that we've worked with so far has worked really hard to meet the standards set in Title 24, Division 9, which is the fire code. It's been a struggle in some places, but nobody has not complied, if that, if that makes any sense. We, we've met all the standards that we need to. We're still working on some places. And I, I've yet to have a request that has not been filled by an applicant.
And reference the request that, that some folks are making to, I guess, add other volatile.
Yeah, sure. We've allowed, originally when we, we made the ordinance, we allowed for ethanol as use as a volatile solvent. I believe at the state that they, ethanol, they've now said, the state has now considered ethanol to be a non-volatile solvent, which is a whole nother story in, in my book, because science says it is. However, I believe they want to use the, have the use of hexane and, and butane and that sort of thing. As the fire marshal, it's all about labeling what the hazardous material is and developing the occupancy in order to handle it. Proper ventilation, proper fire barriers, walls, the occupancy itself makes for that. In the code, industry, in industry, those materials are used. They, there's provisions made for them in the fire code, and it's just a matter of getting it labeled out and, and they can comply ultimately for us.
So for you, the fire department here, if we were to allow that, is that an issue or just a matter of educating and labeling?
No, it's, it's not an issue as long, prevention's everything. So before we have a fire, the, the object for us is to provide for that safety by preventative measures of not allowing it to happen. As an example, sprinkler systems would have to meet the demand for that product. The ventilation systems in the particular rooms that would have a gaseous, a non-liquid type volatile solvent would have to meet the limitations. The alarm systems would have to be in place. And so far, with everything that we've dealt with on the ethanol side, or even the CO2, which is non-volatile, they, we've had all permittees comply.
Can I just add curiosity? Are there any other industries in Willet's that use those materials, other than the cannabis industry?
Not flammable gases, not, not volatile, not gases, but we definitely have other industries that use class 1B flammable liquids for other processes, absolutely. You know, originally, we, we had a lot of folks in this room that were concerned over the use of ethanol in that process, but we use, you know, gasoline's a 1B flammable liquid. So, you know, it's, they're basically have the same properties.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions up here? Thank you, sir. We may have some more questions as we move along. Actually, this question is for our lone law enforcement person here. And again, the reason I'm, I'm asking these questions is that when I sat here and voted for our ordinance, I did tell the folks that if you're bad actors and you're not following the rules, we're not going to play with you. And, and that I would be back to tax you, and I got to be honest with you, I want to keep those promises and so, well, that's another item for discussion later, but. So Sergeant McCoy, have we had any law enforcement issues related to permitted applications?
No, sir. None. Everyone's getting the plans they should, following the rules, go over the security plans, fine, fine tooth comb, send back recommendations, no issues with any of the properties or the owners of them.
And applicants are being fingerprinted?
Yes, sir. The majority of them are actually using our LifeScan here, so we're getting a little money on that too. And no, no issues on it.
Okay. Any questions of Sergeant McCoy? Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot, but, so at this point, I'm going to open it up to council member questions, if not, I'd open it up to the public. Anybody want?
I prefer to hear from the public first and then comment.
Okay. So at this point, I'll open it up to members of the public. Sergeant, if you could come up and state your name.
My name is Michael Doyle. I'm the managing partner of Modular Processing Systems, soon to be a DBA of Pure Ag. My partner David Kursfeld and Glenn Richards, Dr. Richards are here. First, I want to compliment the city at all levels, the police department, the fire department, the building department have been excellent to work with. We have locations in other cities, and we have found things to be consistent and thorough here, so we're very happy. It's been clear to get answers, so I want to say that's been great. And Chris has been excellent to help us with our building and fire prevention. The purpose of me being here tonight is, I mean, we have made great strides at our place, we're now producing product. We have made an effort to use all local people, which I'll discuss in a minute, local resources, engineering firms. We go out of our will, out of our way to buy all raw materials, building materials, things here locally. We have spent millions of dollars here locally, building this asset. We have 10 employees now. We have been successful in this community in finding chemists, biologists, chemical engineers, seasoned people that have learned to operate complicated devices that we're building. My background is refining engineering, not from cannabis. Dr. Richards is from Merck Pharmaceutical. We have people that have been learning to run distillation devices, recovery devices, all local. Our pay scales are between 20 and 65 an hour. What I want to say is about 10 to 20 percent, and there are some experts on this in the room, are probably, you know, I guess, would be medical processing. The balance will be adult use. If you want to control the adult use end of it, I would control it from the retail end. The purpose for our business here is that really cannabis will be eventually just an agricultural product, and this is a hub for a lot of it. Transportation will be a cost, so we located here for several reasons. Here we are in the hub of where a lot of this is happening. We have a million dollar laboratory, it could be a compliance lab, but it's not. It's all quality control. So we, we can QC materials, we do research here, we also look at other oils for oil companies. We do work for BP and Chevron here. I guess what I'm trying to say is, control the retail end of it, on the manufacturing end of it, for employment and taxes. Let us do the adult as well. Our employment will probably go to over 30 people when, when this all opens up, if we can do those ends of it. Restricting to just medical when it becomes enforcement will probably keep us in the 10, 15, 20 range of people, where we could be in the 20 to 40 employment range. Also, the volume of processed material will go up accordingly. Thank you.
Next, anybody else?
My name is David Arrington. I have about 100 acres of industrial on your immediate border in Mendocino. We're trying to annex into the city and build something most likely cannabis related. I own an existing cannabis distribution company. Actually, it's a hub of several distribution companies under one roof in Santa Rosa. We've been operating now about eight months. From the distribution side, there is no distinction between recreational and medical. There's not a box to check or a form to fill out, so I'm not sure how you make the distinction From a, I guess, policy statement or position, I would challenge the mayor and the board to consider the tax policies you're looking at. There's a possibility in the, let's see, we've got 2.8 square miles is Willet's total area, and the cannabis business statewide is around 10 billion, it's projected to be about 45 billion, at least nationally, 45 billion in 2028. It could all be coming out of here. This could be the center in an amazing economic driver, but you'd have to take some bold positions regarding your tax policy. If you're going to tax, like every other jurisdiction, the attraction becomes far less. If you're going to attract, set your tax policy in such a way that people knowingly can base their operations here with the most reasonable tax policy they can find, I think you'll see tens of millions, maybe hundreds of millions of new dollars in construction. My business alone, we've, we've hired, we hired three people Tuesday. So we're growing fast. It's the, we're in Santa Rosa because the regulations were a little bit ahead, but there's every reason in the world it should be here in Willet's. And if you guys can take some bold steps, I think California and soon the world will beat a path to this door. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm Pat Rigel. I'm with Level 5 Custom Processing, which is one of, one of the permitted manufacturers. And I will agree with my fellow manufacturers here that the sky is the limit for the possibilities here in Willet's. And we're here in Willet's because of your boldness and, and taking the initiative to pass the regulation as it is. But more importantly, we're here in Willet's because of your staff. And the difference, be it I have found in the staff here in Willet's and the staff in other municipalities, is they actually follow the rules. The staffing demanded that we actually put up for ethanol. I run, I process with ethanol, and they demanded that I actually comply with the federal and the state ordinances to, to do that. That's not done all over the place. I've been required to build all kinds of things in my facility to, to, to meet the ordinances and, and to be safe. And we've done that, we've complied, and I thank your staff for making sure that happens because if you look at what's happening across the state right now, you've got companies that are crashing and burning because they did not take this seriously. And Willet's is taking it seriously, so I congratulate you. I'm here because of the adult side of this. When we came to Willet's, we came here with the full intent of being medical. We've been called a, a different kind of company because the four partners in this do not use recreational marijuana. We are after CBD, we are after medical, that's our passion, we have children that need it, we have parents that need it, and that's why we're here and we're building the company for that. Well, then reality struck. Turns out that when you extract oil out of the local cannabis, which is the best in the world, you get a lot of THC out of it. And our experience is on the medical side, I only need an itty bitty amount, a microdose of THC to meet our requirements, and that means I have a lot of THC I have to do something with, and that's got to go to the adult market. So, it's nice to say that state passed the law and changed the law and said that we can go now cross boundaries between medical and adult. Well, there are three licensing authorities in California. One of them for manufacturing is the California Department of Public Health. And the public California Department of Public Health issued me my license, right after Willet's issued me my license. Everything's working, with a caveat on it that says, "Medical only cannabis products." So when I call them up and I say, okay, they're changing the law here, we're not medical only anymore, we can go adult in the end. medical-only anymore. We can go adult," and the answer is, "You cannot because of your municipality." So the truth is, is with the medical side of the public health department, they honor the city of Willets and the rest of the municipalities, that if you say there's going to be no adult here, there's no adult. So I really encourage you to change that, please, because it will drive me, on my adult side, out of Willets. I'll have to go across the border somewhere. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak?
I have a comment, but it's about the cannabis tax, so I don't know if it's important.
Well, that's the next one.
Okay.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, my name's Brett Collin-Bini. I'm with Leaf Holdings. We're doing a project over here on 175 North Lenore. We're here tonight for a lot of similar reasons as the rest of the folks in manufacturing. Our facility, we have the distribution, Payne's Distribution, and 707 Manufacturing. Currently, we spent about $8 million on our facility, $6 million on the build-out, where a lot of the local raw materials have come from here locally. We've hired over 35 different local contractors, 44 local trades. We have about 20 staff members in Ukiah that we're going to be moving up once our facility is built up in Willets. We should have close to 80 jobs generated. We're currently raising another round of financing to infuse probably about another $10 million into our project. I'm here tonight for a lot of the similar reasons that our friends have already proposed. One is a tax policy clarification. Because we do have multiple licenses and we're vertically integrated, we wanted to clarify that we won't be taxed in between each one of our licenses. So for example, when we go out and we source biomass and it comes into our facility, it gets transferred over to our manufacturing facility. The manufacturing facility produces the product. It goes back to our distribution and it goes out to the, to the market. So in that clarification, we just want to make sure that we're not going to be taxed at each level. The other issue is, obviously with all the tax pressure, is that the local farmers, and that's somebody that we're very intimate with, you know, this is where we generate all our feedstock, our raw materials to go into our equipment. And with the cultivation tax and then all the other taxes that we're going to assume with the market volatility, we're, you know, proposing that the city looks at a lower tax rate. I know that between the retail, specifically for distribution and manufacturing, it's 2% to 3% if you give a range, and then 2.5% to 6%. And I know that you retain the right to decrease the lower end of the tax rate. And so we'd like you guys to take a look at that and understand all the pressures that the market is currently having, the volatility of the market, you know, the farms, the costs, all those things that go into it.
I just want to speak to it. This, what you're speaking to is actually the next item on our agenda?
Oh, okay.
So you'll have a chance to address that.
I got ahead of myself, sorry.
That's all right.
Okay.
Go back and... We can answer those questions at the next item.
Okay, that's fine. And then the, you know, the type 7, right now in the state, there's, as of February 15th, there's 385 type 7 state licenses. And we all certainly want to be competitive. We want to be able to put out great products. A lot of these nutraceutical-type offerings that we can make, we have to isolate certain cannabinoids, and we need that type of processing to do that. So that's very important. That's about it. I think we addressed the same issues, you know, the type M and the type A as far as...
You're out of time. Sorry about that.
Okay. Well, anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak?
Good evening, City Council. Kevin Shi from MO City. First, I want to thank you guys for passing this ordinance last year. So as you can see, all these guys here now trying to bring in more business and build out more in town, and it sounds like everyone's been good actors so far. So I just feel this, this kind of movement is what we need for the city. I definitely want to appreciate the city staff and the fire department and everyone else helping us getting through this process, because it's, all I can say is I wish the state worked like the city, then we wouldn't be in the position we are right now, trying to, you know, really jumping through a lot of hoops at the state level as they keep moving away, or moving the hoops around. So, and there's just delays after delays, and I'm sure you guys already know the market correction that's happening right now. A lot of people are not making it. A lot of people are debating it. So I'll leave the tax for the next section, but I think for Willets, if we want to make this, you know, really an economical driver and really stand out and kind of take advantage of all the advantage we have here, right? The human resource, people already see that. The best product in the world is produced in this region. I think we just, I mean, I feel there's no halfway. Now we're already here. We should definitely push for recreational, so we can even compete in this market, because really for us as a distributor or a cultivator, I mean, our choice is going to be limited and our buyer is going to be limited. So, and really, right now, they're trying to control the medical and recreational side at the retail front. So as producers, we shouldn't be limited. And type 7, people already mentioned that. I do think that's going to be needed, just because with type 6, you won't be able to produce a lot of product. A lot of categories is going to be missing on your, on your manual when you try to distribute or when you try to show us what you can provide, you know. I mean, there's product that can only be done by type 7, and the same process is applied in pharmaceutical manufacture. It seems like the fire department has a pretty good handle on it, and as long as everyone do their build-out correctly and follow the right rules, there should be really no more dangers than type 6 in terms of, as long as you meet all your requirements. Then also, we all, I mean, I'm bringing tourists here now. I'm trying to bring more tourists here, but we're going to need recreational for that. They're going to need, I mean, right now, there, there's a tourist group bringing tourists up here, and they're going to go to the state forests just so they can smoke there, and they don't have anywhere else to go. But there is a big need for tourism, and they're already sending bus, daily bus to Mendocino.
I'm out of time, but I want to ask you two questions.
Yeah, please.
Are you up and running now?
Yes, with cultivation, distribution, and yes.
And how many employees do you have? You were one of the first, that's why I'm asking you.
Right. We have about 10 employees right now, including part-time.
Okay. And for the benefit of everybody here, type 7 license is?
It's the volatile manufacturer license.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I figured you're my resident expert here, so.
I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm still glad to see all this. And just last point is appellations. I think the city needs to look at that. I think the county has an appellation reserved that's called Willets, so we should get involved in that, too. Thank you.
It's me again. My name's Jeannie King. I'm a long-term resident of Willets. And I feel strongly that Willets has to look at what they're losing, not necessarily what they're gaining. And I myself have known numerous people over the last couple of years that are fleeing Mendocino County. They're fleeing to states like Idaho and Texas where marijuana is not legal. They're pulling their kids out of the schools. I know three kids in one family are leaving by the end of the year and going to Idaho. That you need to think about what you're losing as well as what you might be gaining. Money, why sometimes I look at you guys and I see the big dollar signs, "Oh, boy, we're going to make money." But I believe that you have a soul. I know I have a soul, and I believe this town has a soul. I don't want to see this town lose its soul to make money. And I also want to beg of you to please not throw the children in this community under the bus. Only one of you still is raising children in this community. There's a couple of you that have raised children in this community, and I want you to ask yourself, what kind of community do you want your children in this town to grow up in? And that not only are people leaving, but there's people that won't move here because of the reputation that Mendocino and Willets has. And you have this wonderful state-of-the-art hospital at the south end of town. You're going to maybe have trouble getting doctors and nurses and respiratory therapists to move here because they don't want to live in a town that's centered on marijuana. I have a granddaughter that I took to gymnastics today, and the gymnastics building shares a building with other businesses. It reeked of marijuana, not because of the gymnastics staff, but because of the people next door. And we really have to take care of our children. It's your responsibility to take care of the children in this town. And I would be very sad to see Willets, and I also, I want to ask you to be truth seekers, not these people. They're probably wonderful people, and they really believe in what they're doing, but they have an agenda. They have a financial agenda here. I'm asking you to be truth seekers and find out what the real truth is about marijuana. There may be truth in what they're saying, but there's also many other truths. Marijuana has a societal effect. It has an impact on people's mental health. It has an impact on people's, anyway. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Hello. My name is Tim King. I grew up here in Willets. I own a home here in Willets, and I have one child in Willets Public Schools. And I have my daughter who will be starting in Willets Public Schools next year. I'm also not a business owner, but I am a member of the business community in Willets, and I feel like it gives me a unique perspective talking to other employers in town. And I think that if you talk to some of the major employers in town, you will find they have a very hard time bringing people here to work. If you talk to the schools, the hospital, engineering firms, they have a very hard time attracting people to come here. And a lot of that is the reputation of the schools, which in my opinion is unearned, but I don't think that any of this that we're talking about is going to help that, especially having manufacturing right next to a middle school. Anywho, that's my opinion, and thank you for listening to me.
She beat you to it.
Just really quick. I'm Amy Gromes, and I'm a teacher. I have children in this community. I was born in Ukiah but raised here. My parents, my mom was born at the Willets Hospital. I just want to say that I agree with both of them, and that's, children first and dollars last. So that's it. And then I'll have more comments on the next, I think, is the next agenda for the REMCO site?
No.
Okay, so then I want to speak to that really quick. I'd like to know what the ordinance is for near a school cultivation or buildings of, is that on? Am I missing something?
That's not on for discussion today, as far as that, but...
I thought the REMCO site was...
No, that, that isn't per se. There's an application that's been pulled, and what you can do, if you're interested in the actual ordinance, you can get a copy from staff.
Okay, is that coming up, Tim?
It's on our website.
Yeah, it's on our website.
Is it coming up in the next board meeting, or how do we discuss that?
So I, I think that there's been some confusion regarding the REMCO issue, and if, it doesn't have to do with this agenda item.
Okay.
But if the council would like the community development director just to explain what is going on, not for discussion, but just as maybe a clarification of what's going on.
Yeah, there was some misinformation spread out in the community that we were going to, I think a dispensary was said.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, we can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda, but just...
Can I make a quick comment, if I still have time then? Really quick? So I just, I, I just want to second that our children come first, and maybe I need to come back to a public comment about the ordinance of how far a grow site is from a school. And I understand it's now 200 feet. Most cities, it's 1,000 feet from a school.
600 feet.
Okay, most cities in other towns, in other states even, it's 1,000 feet. But here, it's how much?
600.
600 feet. So I'm confused when I drive down. Okay. So for dispensary or, so dispensaries are different? Okay, so both of those, I would, I guess I, maybe I need to come back during public comment on that, because I'd like to, how do we address this as parents of the community and teachers of the community for students that would be next to a building? There's also issues with county, because I'm near a school that's the county right next door. My classroom smells the marijuana every day that it's the season, right? Six months out of the year. My students get to go into a classroom where it smells of marijuana. And they might get it at home. They shouldn't get it at school. So maybe I need, I'll come back for a public comment when it's, I'd like to address that.
Staff is recommending that we make certain changes to our ordinance. Dusty, do we summarize what those changes are? Most of them are to comply with state law, where we are inconsistent right now with our, with state law. And so should staff do that, if the council gives staff the authority to make certain changes in the ordinance, then that'll come on at a future council meeting. And any, any changes that the public would like to see in the ordinance would be appropriate to discuss that at that time.
Although we're not talking about a particular site, we are talking about how ordinance compares to that of state law. And our buffer is not the same as the state law. So in essence, we are talking about similar things. We're talking about how we need to, what the possibility is of keeping our ordinance in line with that of the state, but to neglect another issue that's of value to the community, which is the buffer distance, seems, in my opinion, unfair.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not an appropriate issue. I'm saying that all of these issues that relate to possible amendments in our ordinance are, I assume, going to be taken up in the coming weeks.
Absolutely.
And we will have on an agenda a proposed amended ordinance that staff is suggesting. And if there's interest in the community in changing the buffer zones, that is something that could be taken up at that time.
Maybe it would help if Dusty at least just to put this to rest, so that if there are other folks that came here, thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, we're seeking clarification on the buffer requirements between a cannabis activity business and a sensitivity step there, such as a school. What our ordinance says is a dispensary shall be at least 600 feet from the building where the dispensary is being operated to the boundaries of the property that houses the school. Other cannabis activities beyond dispensary have a 200-foot buffer. So for instance, the application that we received for what folks commonly know as the REMCO property, which we're now trying to rename the Archway Properties based on the new ownership. But anyways, that business has an established 200-foot buffer from, from the school.
And the state's...
The state, the state allows local jurisdictions to come up with their own buffers. Without established buffer, the state license requires a 600-foot.
600 feet. For both?
For only...
For dispensary and...
For any cannabis use, yeah. So whether it's outdoor cultivation or dispensary or...
But the city council reduced that for local ordinance to 200, correct?
Correct.
Can I ask Dusty a question?
Yeah.
Do you know why the council, the council decided to change that from 600 to 200? Why they reduced that difference?
Yeah, I can, I can try to reflect that conversation, and I'll invite other council members to maybe chime in on that question as well. You know, the, the hope, the thought was that, you know, with, with the regulations and standards that we have in place in the ordinance, based on the fact that we're not allowed to smell odors from... odors from outside the building, not just off the property, but outside the building, you know, you're very limited on any type of advertising that you can have. You, any cannabis activity itself cannot be visible from a public street or public area. So, the idea is if someone's properly following those standards, you should be able to drive right by one of these buildings and not really understand what's truly going on there. And so, I think there was some level of comfort in establishing a smaller buffer than, say, the 600 feet or the 1,000.
Can you speak to why people in the community might still be smelling cannabis odors in there?
Well, I'm gonna talk to Jeannie later, because she mentioned a strong smell coming from the gymnasium, which I think is on Franklin Street. Yeah, so code enforcement's gonna go by there. And I'll, you know, one thing about our applicants, they're probably just as interested in us going and make sure that there aren't any illegal operations going on. In fact, that's part of why they have a fairly hefty application fee, is to help offset our costs of dealing with illegal cannabis operations. So, we will follow up with that. There is no, we have not received a license or approved a license for any type of cannabis activity near that location. So, if there is something going on beyond just maybe somebody, I don't know, I mean, there could be a reason why there was a temporary smell, but we'll follow up on that and take proper actions if we do confirm any odors.
Dusty, Madge wanted to...
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the ad hoc committee in working on developing the ordinance that we did adopt, we visited several places that were legal operations in other communities, other jurisdictions, and there were ones that were just impressive in that you could be standing at the front door and not smell any marijuana at all, and the minute you opened the door and walked in, you could smell it. So, there are some very effective practices for reducing or eliminating any off-site or out-of-the-building odors, but some of the, some illegal operations may not be doing that, and we need to make sure we're enforcing our code. If we do look at changing those zones, those, you know, the buffer zones, then we really should also make sure we look at how many schools and what that means on the ground in Willets, because I think if you get the buffer zone bigger and bigger, then it ends up there's hardly any piece of property that can be developed at all, and that would be... I don't think that was the intent of our ordinance at all.
And I want to add that when we went visiting different places, one of the things that stood out for me was that, at least in two of the places, you didn't know what was there. They had an address, they had a name, you know, ABC Industries or whatever. And in one place, I smelled marijuana, and I said, "Hey, I smell marijuana," and the guy said, "It ain't ours." It was a place in San Francisco, and you could smell, he says, "Those are illegal operations, and we've reported them to the city because it's not us." And then, when they showed us their odor control, it was kind of, I think they call it a negative air system, where it's kind of like going into a spaceship. You open the door, and the air is actually getting sucked in to prevent the odors from going out, and they showed us their filtration system. So, again, you would not be able to tell, and that is the level of what I expected any of our applicants to be doing here, so that you'd look over and would not see what was, you know, you couldn't see or smell and figure out what it was unless you happen to know that's what's happening there. But what we didn't want would be, you know, Jerry's Pot Emporium, you know, and smelling like, like it's a party going on. We didn't want that happening there, so. And that was important to me, because I didn't want to smell either. I don't like the smell, you know, I'll be the first to tell you, but, so. Thank you, Dusty. Anybody?
You can stand up and be ready if you want.
Hello, I'm Maria Lusanque, I'm the principal at Becto Grove Middle School, and I wanted to have been for the last 10 years. I want to lend my support to have this buffer put on the agenda, or for possibility of change, because like Jeannie says, there is a huge effect on the community, twice as much an effect on the school. And if you think about it, we have adolescents, and just walking by this type of manufacturing and having that be so easily accessible gives them the desire to want to do what adults do. So, and so I want, I would like to have that, say that, I would like to have you relook at that, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Kersfeldt, and I'm one of the partners at MPS here in Willets, and my wife's a local physical therapist, and we raise children here as well. And I believe that the children are first as well, I agree with them. But I think a lot of the problems that we're occurring in schools, in different places, comes from unlicensed cannabis. If you come into our facility, professionally ran by chemists and engineers, we hired local chemists and engineers that we found here, and you won't find those kind of behaviors, there's no youth around. A licensed facility doesn't have children running around. And so, by you guys doing your jobs, and doing such a great job with us, and allowing a different look to cannabis, a more professional aspect of cannabis than just people growing in their backyards, and their children coming to school stinking, a licensed facility won't have children around. So, I believe in our children first as well. I was raised here myself, and I'm a part of local Rotary, and I agree 100%, I've watched the negative aspects of cannabis happen here locally, 100%. I've watched crime, all kinds of stuff happen. But what you guys are doing now is eliminating that. And what we do at MPS is we bring products that don't meet spec back into taxation. Okay, so if someone doesn't pass pesticides, molds, heavy metals, it's quarantine and destroy unless you have a remediation plan. And there's not many places in the state of California. If you Google cannabis remediation, Willets is one of the only places in California that can do it. And so, I encourage you guys to consider the recreational aspect of cannabis, because it should be regulated at the sale of the cannabis, not at the manufacturing of the cannabis, because we want to bring in business from the entire state of California in through Willets. And, and there's a lot, we can't, there's more demand than we have capacity, let's put it that way. And so, we plan on bringing a lot of jobs to Willets, and doing a lot of good things, and keeping cannabis away from children, not having children come to school smelling like cannabis. My kids are not exposed to any cannabis, and I run a professional business here in Willets. And I want you guys to let us be able to bring industry to Willets. It's you guys that allow industry to happen here in Willets. You can have the strict rules and the results you were looking for at the same time as allowing us to do business here. And we can have all the jobs and taxation that you want, but we, you guys have to open the door for professionals to come in, deal with type 7 gases. My guys have dealt with gases their entire careers, and they're not fresh out of college, you know? And so, let professionals, like, like our fire chief here, set the rules. Thank you. Now, we'd add a tour of our facility, so it's open to you guys anytime.
Anybody else that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Amanda Canoda, and I'm a local business owner on Main Street, as well as, I do have children in the public school system here. And I was actually at the committee meetings that discussed the zoning in the school. And Madge brought up the issue of distances as well, and how small town was. And the reason that the manufacturing and stuff was allowed by the middle school was because they had, they're already zoned for industrial, they signed a waiver to be there. And even though people like me brought it up, that it wasn't appropriate for manufacturing there, they allowed it anyhow. So, it's a zoning issue, and I think Dusty's working on that soon, so the stuff like that changes, so that's one I think you should bring it up. And then also, the excise taxes and stuff should, I think, may be maintained on the retail end and not the manufacturing end. We need the businesses that are coming in here, and recreational is definitely needed. We need the tourism in downtown. Yeah, definitely, it's needed, I support it, and Main Street needs it. Thank you.
Right, anybody else that'd like to speak? It's your opportunity, good or bad, for one side or the other.
Good evening, my name's Mark Herbert. I wasn't gonna do this, but I've heard a couple of things that I think might deserve some clarity. I think there's some things I've heard tonight's meeting that I did think deserve some clarity. As far as my understanding of using volatile compounds, there's a methodology in place and used by industry called a closed-loop system, where in fact, these volatile compounds are captured, not being released to environment, they're captured within the processing equipment, keeping it stable, contained, and in a safe condition to in fact conserve that product for reuse and to not negatively impact the environment. That's factual. There are a number of other things factual, I think, are being overlooked. Medical cannabis is being sunsetted. Recreational cannabis is legal, we should move past that. Cannabis is a plant. It's a true and real plant, it's defined by science and by its Latin nomenclature. The word marijuana is in fact a created racist word, it's anti-Hispanic, there's a lot of anti-Hispanic fervor in this country, always has been. And it's improper to codify any argument using that word, because it is an implied racist term, it has nothing to do with the plant. As far as the past choices of council to make, codify, through ad hoc committees, through opening council meetings, constructing these laws, I think it is in the best interest of the community and the council, as well as our confidence in local governance, since our former mayor, who spoke so poorly of anyone who was involved with cannabis, quite often vehemently on the record here in these chambers, negative language, de-croc, cutting me short during my comment periods. Now that he is vested in a cannabis industry in this city, I'd like the city to actually allow us to review a lot of those meetings and his votes, which may have mitigated his ability to conduct business. Furthermore, given the fact that the federal government considers cannabis illegal, and there is no banking mechanism for cannabis, meaning it's an all-cash business, these businesses have to be secured. There's no children hanging around, there's no thugs hanging around. But Mr. Burton's on the board of the Bank of Willets, he can't be on the board and be involved with a cannabis business, that'd be a federal violation. Thank you for your time, and thank you for making clear codification to keep the community safe and to make a stronger and vibrant economy. I appreciate your time.
Anybody else that'd like to speak?
I just have a question again, sorry. Can you clarify what it means to have, because I'm new to this whole world of marijuana or cannabis? So, can you clarify what it means, I understand the medical side and being, and shipping it out and being used in other areas, or having to have a prescription, correct? But what does it mean for our town? What will it look like if we do adult use? What is it gonna look like in the future, if we say okay to adult use?
Madge, you want to take a stab at it?
Yeah, well, first of all, at the state level, it is totally legal for anybody to use cannabis in their private home.
Over 21.
Over 21, yeah. So, and they can also grow cannabis in their home and in the city. Well, it's only indoors, under certain conditions, but it's legal for people to have recreational use of cannabis personally at their homes. So, that, that's statewide, doesn't matter whether the city likes it or not.
Yes.
The manufacturing, any, any commercial activities involving cannabis are subject to local regulation, and each jurisdiction can decide what those regulations are, and that's what we did in 2017 when we adopted this ordinance. It only had to do with commercial activities, not with personal uses.
Commercial, medical.
Yes, and, and I was gonna say, at that time, there was a clear distinction at the state level between medical use and other adult use, recreational use. And we were, since it was our very first time opening that door at all, we were much more comfortable to keep it with medical, and we were counting on the state to have regulations that made that distinction. Shortly after that, the state law was changed by a public referendum that now legalized adult use statewide, and the state has then changed their regulations, so they're really not making much of a distinction. For example, there's no track and trace system to say that if, if a commercial manufacturer in our jurisdiction sells to some other retail place wherever, you know, anywhere else in the state, to assure that that was medical. The distinction doesn't, isn't being enforced at the state level, we can't even determine whether, I believe that's the case.
Attorney will clarify this, Ben.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's, you know, that's what's going on at the state level. The state regulations are not really defining a line between adult recreational use and medical.
So, my question is, is for the city of Willets, and what would it look like in the city of Willets if the council okayed adult use? What is it gonna look like for our community, so everybody knows? Is that gonna, I understand the tourist part. Personally, I don't want my kids seeing the tourists come and, and make this into a community of, like they said, smoking downtown tourists, like to bring more in, so can you tell us what it would look like?
I'm gonna give a shot at it, because I think, I think you asked a really good question, and this industry is new to me too, so I've been learning a lot, and some of these things I've only learned recently. And you want to know what practically this means for, for the community when this happens, and I think that's a great question.
Yeah, my kids, I hope they stay, but they may not.
So, my understanding, and I'm, we have an attorney here who specializes in this particular branch of law, and she will correct me, I'm sure, if I misspeak. My understanding is that in the, in the non-dispensary realm, like manufacturing, distribution, all that, you will not see any difference whatsoever. It is, it is basically no change, because it's all behind the scenes, what happens, it is not open to the public, the public will not deter, have any, there is no difference from what the public sees, because it is all behind the scenes. What is, if we choose to do adult use for dispensaries, those are different. The difference between medical dispensaries and adult-use dispensaries is, a medical dispensary, you can be 18 years old and use a medical dispensary. An adult-use dispensary, you have to be 21. So, there's actually more stringent rules with adult-use dispensaries. Medical dispensaries, you can get a stronger product. So, adult-use dispensaries, you can actually get a less, if you don't have a medical card, you cannot get a stronger product. We are not recommending any change in the number of dispensaries, we've only allowed up to three, and in particularly designated areas. Those areas are not Main Street, those areas are moved away from our downtown core, and they are supposed to be unobtrusive, and that's actually part of the scoring system is, are they unobtrusive? That, we are not recommending any change to that. If you, if the council chooses to go adult-use dispensaries, what you'll, so we may have people applying for one of those three licenses that don't do medical, therefore, they will only have people over 21 who are allowed to go to them. So, you will not see an increase in the number of dispensaries. And, and I'm gonna ask the attorney, am I correct?
Yeah.
So, that is really what you're looking at in terms of the public perception of what you see, is maybe a slight change in, in what the dispensary sells, whether it's medical, but the behind-the-scenes, the public should not see. If we're doing our job and regulating the smell and the site and all of those criteria that we set forth, this council set forth that was very stringent, that will continue. And so, that's, yeah, we're not, we are, we have not recommended, unless the council wants us to have outdoor...
Growing or something.
Something like that, but that is not on the table, my understanding.
Ben, you wanted to...
Well, just one clarification, for dispensaries, we did approve for C2 zoning, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So, if you look at where we have C2 zoning, there was a statement made at Main Street, and I think that sometimes we say Main Street, we think of like downtown Main Street, but the fact is, is that we have C2 zoning on the, what most of us consider a Main Street, which is... which is all the way down to the Evergreen Shopping Center. That is zoned C2. And a dispensary can go into that Evergreen Shopping Center or anywhere along that Main Street area that is zoned C2.
That's true.
And there are other C2 pockets throughout the community. It's not as if C2 is kind of like off in the back. It's just not in our two and a half blocks downtown, just for clarification.
Thank you. That's right. Yeah, and I just wanted to further answer your question. That is kind of what is on the table right now in us directing staff to relook at this ordinance. How do, how much do we want them to change it? When it comes back, we will be making that decision. And that is partly to answer, what do we want in our community? Where do we want...
Then I'm just going to say, I oppose it as a parent and as someone that only sees it as a purpose for medical. I just, I oppose it. And you're rubber stamping it when you're saying yes to that. You're rubber stamping that we're okay with it as a Willets city. And the other question I have before I'm done was, what is, why was it put in the words that you wouldn't put any signs on the side of the building? Why was there, was there nothing to be seen on the side of the building to where you don't know what's there?
Well, I think we wanted not... Well, and I think, I don't have the exact terminology and destiny, but what we didn't want was something in your face. What I wanted, honestly, I envisioned is that this would be just another business, just like we have any other business coming in. But what I didn't want is, you know, the fake lights and that sort of thing that as we brought folks into town, I don't want it to become the only thing. I think we should have a mixture, a mixture of different businesses, et cetera, working together in the community. And that's how I envisioned it, but I didn't want it to define us.
Which I appreciate because that's the other part is like, why wouldn't, if it's so good, then why wouldn't we put the name on the side? I oppose putting the name on the side. But I'm saying, if it was, if it was something we could show and everyone approves of, then why wouldn't the name be on the side of the building? It's kind of like a, we're going to hide it behind these walls and it doesn't actually happen, but we want the revenue from it. So that's all I'm going to say.
Just to clarify, that ordinance does say that the signage for cannabis facilities must be visible from public areas, public right-of-ways, and are limited to the name of the business only, shall be in compliance with city sign code, and shall contain no advertising of any company's brands, products, goods, or services. You can have the green cross, which is designated to identify medical cannabis. So it is the business name and a green cross, if that's part of a dispensary or some kind of a medical facility.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Well, and that's the thing is it's...
And I'll tell you, I mean, and I don't know whether you do or not, but if you drink wine, and a lot of this would mirror what you see at liquor stores, except in our case, we wanted it a little more stringent. You can go by a liquor store and you can see Budweiser maybe advertise it. And we didn't really want that level.
And I appreciate that.
But, so, and again, that's the comparison I make there.
Amy?
Yes.
You were in my class and a lot of other people that were here were in my class. There was absolutely no criteria for anybody that grew pot out in the wilderness or in town. You could grow it in your backyard, you could do whatever you wanted. When the city finally came up with a criteria of what you could do and what you could not do, then it took it out of the backyard for people in the city only. Now, what we have done is cleaned it up and made it tighter for the people that are working in cannabis. Not saying that you have to take care of it, or I have to partake in it, or whoever wants to take in. It's up to a personal choice. But I don't want you to say that it wasn't around when you were a kid, because I've been here 50 years and it was around in 50 years ago, out in the wilderness, out in the, a lot of people that you know and I know, and everybody in this room knows, grew cannabis. And they didn't call it cannabis those days. They've cleaned up the name. So I'm saying, I was a school teacher and I also saw what it did to students, okay? I'm not saying that I'm against it. I'm just saying I saw what it did to students. But it was because they could get it. In fact, in fact, I told Jerry today, we had a meeting together, and I said, when I was teaching woodshop for 35 years, and I taught woodshop, I would ask the kids once in a while, can you get me a beer or get me marijuana? And they would say, it's going to take me a couple hours to get you a beer because I got to find somebody that was old enough to buy the beer, that marijuana I can get you in three minutes. And so that's where it was back in those days that you were starting up and everybody else was starting up. What we have done is we've tried to make it as clean as we can and not bother you. There are places in this community where if you didn't know what was there, you would never have any idea of what they were doing in the building. And that's up to us to make it where you can't smell it, or see it, or have people smoking it that's in the wrong area, okay?
I appreciate that. And I also want to make sure we add to the agenda about the buffer zone, because that's very important.
Then when we start that...
And I was very thankful that as a kid growing up, I knew nothing about marijuana until I was in high school, because I was raised from a family that was not into drugs. So that's all I'm going to comment.
And Amy, I kind of gave you extra time because we were kind of using you.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm a Willets resident. I deserve a little bit of that.
And Amy, it served the purpose to have you kind of be our point there.
I appreciate it.
So this is me when those trucks come out of that invisible...
Okay, please, I've got somebody that's...
Thank you.
Do you want to speak, Tammy? You can come up here, okay?
No, I'm going to come to the microphone. Go to the next one.
Good evening. My name is Rose Ireland. I've lived here since 2002 in this area. I would like to say thank you to Larry Stransky for rethinking this. I've stood before the city council a number of years ago when we weren't allowing any of it. And I was addressing, I'm a biologist. I've been working with breeding cannabis genetics for many years. And I, as soon as I heard about the potential of CBD cannabis for helping with seizures, someone in my family has seizures, and I immediately started working with that. I have, I believe it will become a moot point soon, the medical versus the adult recreational. The plant cannabis sativa, for anything else, we might think the plant is healing on so many different levels. And we've kind of broken it down to these major constituents, partially to be able to speak about it easily and partially to make products and all that. THC and CBD are both very vital components of the plant, if you will. And originally, it's pretty well believed around the world now that they balance each other out, while THC can cause you to become paranoid in certain people at certain times in high levels. The CBD is anxiolytic or anti-anxiety, and they've been balancing each other for tens of thousands of years that it's been used for medicine. That said, I spoke before the city council, partially because I felt compelled to, so many people in this community are using it for medicine. At that point, they were trying desperately to get access to CBD. I've seen it personally stop seizures in children and adults, anxiety issues, getting off of harder pharmaceutical drugs. People are looking for those alternatives and trying to keep a more open mind. It will become a moot point when you look at it for children. Honestly, I have seen children who need some amount of THC in with the CBD. It works much better. You can reference it yourself and look it up. Many PhD researchers and doctors around the world before, you know, we've just had the federal stranglehold on it here, but around the world, the research has been done. And our own, our own FDA has approved things that we are not allowed to do here from a company in England. So it's just to be mindful of all that. Thank you.
Anybody else? How about we let her speak and then you'll get your turn again.
My name is Melissa Walters. I'm a member of the community that's been born and raised here with family in the Leightonville Willets and Ukiya area for over 40 years now. As a young adult in the area and also an expectant member, I have watched a very large amount of very talented individuals purge out of this area because of the lack of opportunity for employment. I have, I spent a good portion of my career so far in my life, actually away from cannabis, regardless of what I've, how I was, you know, how I was raised. Everybody in the community has seen it, as Larry has mentioned. And recently with the new regulations, I have seen a drastic change in our community with how much better. You don't see as much crime and you don't see so much of the adverse effects in the communities because of the regulations. And I really do appreciate that. And it's made it to where I have actually looked into positions where I never would have dreamed of going into the cannabis industry. And I see, what I've seen in just the six months that I've worked for the company that I'm with right now, is an incredible collaborative of intelligent people that are coming from this area that I didn't, they were based here. A lot of people stayed and didn't have, you know, had qualifications but didn't have any place to work for these kind of things. I really appreciate that I can look forward to a great career here and not have to outsource to Santa Rosa, which I, everybody in this room knows somebody that has to commute down south to have a, have a good job. We have, everybody in this room is known, people, young people, that have moved out of the area for college to find an opportunity and never came back. And for me, who has such a strong tie with the area, I hike, I fish, I use all of the natural resources that are around us. The fact that I can have both, I can have my cake and eat it too, is just fantastic. And what, you know, people don't understand about the additional money revenue for the area, is it's not just for these major companies to make a buck. It's to employ hard-working people in the community. And I would like people to, you know, take that in, I guess. So that's it. Thank you.
Sir, if you want to...
I would just, Pat Rigel, again, Level 5 custom processing. I'd just like to point out some things of clarity. I am not a cannabis marijuana expert. That's not me. But I am a security expert. And I will tell you this, a couple of months ago, what you said may be true about track and trace, it is no longer true. As a manufacturer, I have to track every gram of cannabis that comes in my door, what I do with it, who touches it. I have to sign for it. Two-man rule. Ma'am, I came out of the nuclear weapons industry. That's what we did covering nuclear weapons. That's what we do now with this cannabis. The next thing I'd like to point out, Mr. Chairman, is there seems to be a confusion. I run a legal licensed facility. I am under strict regulations, not just the codes back here. I'm underneath the cannabis regulation run by the state. And it says that I can't have children running around outside my building. I have to have cameras on them. And if I see children running outside my building, I'm in violation of state law. And I've got to get them run off or call the law enforcement to get them run off. I can't have them there. If I have somebody inside my facility less than 21 years old, I am in violation of losing my license and getting shut down. If I have any of the children around my facility, I am in violation and I get shut down. It is not legal facilities that are causing the problem. It is the lack of busting the ones that are illegal that's causing the problem. Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
By chance, you were recreational as well as medical, would the same rules apply?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The only difference between medical and recreational is medical, you have to have a doctor's license. They call it this little green card, and we'll have a long discussion about that. But the fact is, is you have to have a doctor's permission slip. And it's tax-free because it's a doctor's permission slip. There's two different tracking methods. They are controlled. And I'll tell you what, if any dispensary or if anybody out here gives something to somebody less than 21 years old, they need to get hauled off. But it isn't my outfit, because you don't even know where my outfit is, unless you've been there, because I don't have a sign on mine. I don't sell anything here. I don't peddle anything here. It all goes to the legal market. Thank you.
Actually...
Okay, now, we can...
Tim, I'm going to let you talk.
I think, I think I'd just like to clarify that I think that most people are concerned about children, aren't we? We're concerned about them breaking into these facilities. It's more about them being so close to schools and just, you know, if my kid broke into any business, they'd be in deep debt.
The only problem is they're being zoned by the middle school. Nobody likes them.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Right, anybody that has not spoken?
I wasn't going to speak either, but I do think there's a little bit of lost information here. Some people think that, okay, we're going to be a little Copenhagen. You're going to go get your stuff and then you're just going to go sit out on Main Street and watch traffic go by while you smoke. Nobody wants to see that, and I think that's a misperception. Or at our city park, you take your kids to the park, they're playing on the swings, and there's a bunch of people sitting around going, I got my 215. I got my, you know. A parent wants to know they can take the kids to the park and there's not these people sitting there doing that going, uh-uh. Or your neighbor yelling at you across the fence going, hey, I can do what I want. We're all legal now. I believe that there's a lot of concerns in a lot of different ways. When I had a retail store and I would do tuxedos, all these young people would come in, some of them a bit more nervous than others, because they were trying to figure out how they were financially going to get that tuxedo so they could get that girl everything she wanted. Well, some of them came in with just, you know, their stinky twenties, throwing them down, saying, I want the best of everything. Sometimes I had to chase them down to get that outfit back. Those kids that worked at McDonald's and Taco Bell came in all nervous, trying to figure out how they were going to do it and could they make payments? And I never had to chase any of them. There's some attitude there. And when they're standing there and they're all talking about, you know, where you get your money, where I get my money, and I'll say, well, what are you going to do when you graduate? Just to keep the flow of conversation going. It was real sad to hear the ones with the stinky twenties, and not all of them, but go, oh, what do you think I'm going to do? You know, my parents went to college and they make more money now than they did working the job that they got when they graduated. The ones working at Taco Bell were like, hmm, something's not right here. I'm working way too hard. It sends the wrong message. Why bother to go to school? Why bother to graduate? Why bother any of the stuff that their parents and their grandparents strive for? I'm hoping all of that is changing with some, all this legalization. But I also spend a lot of time coming and going from the park area, and I see all the kids drifting from different schools, and they're all trying to find a place to hide to take care of business. But I've also been there with grandkids in the park or just walking down the street, and I got some yahoo, you know, holding up a pipe across the street because there's a bench to sit down. Anyways, that's kind of the stuff that people are concerned with, the whole touristy word. We don't want to be a little Copenhagen.
Anybody who has not spoken that wants to speak? Okay. So Stephanie, I think...
I'll come next.
Tammy, if you want to speak, you're more than welcome to.
No, my lights aren't so good, Jerry. If I can't...
Okay.
Jerry, can I talk a little bit? Excuse me.
I don't want to be accused of not letting the public speak, folks, so I'm trying to give you, we've got a long agenda, but I think this is an important subject and I want to make sure everybody gets a chance.
My name is Ross Mayfield, Jr. I've been a lifetime resident of Union County, Boring, Ukiya. And I've been over the whole county, and Willets has been my back home too. I'm glad to see everybody here, and I really mean that. I mean, you guys are coming out and you're voicing your opinion, and you're going to get that right. You're going to get something right, because most of the time, not everybody shows up. And you guys coming now and trying to get things straight, and I feel sorry for the planning department. I'm sorry, even though I'm maybe at Oz with them a lot of the time, but he has a job to turn around and sort out and get all the new laws, which are subject to change every minute. The marijuana law... The marijuana law in the state of California is crazy. I mean, you cannot turn around, walk out your door and not see a change. But the population here is trying to make a good combination, because I don't like kids drinking in the parks. I don't like adults being drunk in the parks, nor, nor smoking, nor smoking marijuana where everybody else is around them. So you've got to come to a middle of the road or something that's good for everybody. And we're not all gonna like it, but you can make it work. And I'm a property owner here in Willets. And I own commercial property. I want you to know, it's already controlled very good about what signs you put up, what you can do, and everything else has to be posted. And you gotta go along with that. You don't wanna be afraid not to say something's there. That's the worst thing you can do. You wanna turn around, be upfront. You don't wanna have that person out there smoking on the curb. You wanna have your ordinances and things in line. But you've gotta do it, and you have to work it and work it through. And I think you will do it. And I think a thousand, I was told it was a thousand feet when I came on board. A thousand feet is fine. I don't care if it's fifteen hundred, six hundred, two hundred feet, baloney. Thousand feet away, and then you can adjust or change things at a later date if you want to, everything. Because this thing has to be a workable system. You don't wanna be rigid. You wanna get what you need to have, and I'm very proud of you guys. You went out, you smelled these things out and you see it. But it's gonna be a way of life. We are gonna be in that society. It's just no different liquor, because I heard one of the liquor stores in the municipal county had the drunks outside. And I can tell you how many of them there are from a sixty-nine-year-old dude. And I, you know, been around through all the bars and John's Place and all the rest of stuff up here, with uncles and aunts and the whole nine yards. So, telling you, keep on doing what you're doing now. You may be very proud to see the activities coming out of here, especially with the staff that also want to create jobs. And they want to do it in a legal manner and make it right. And believe me, they have a hell of a time service a lot changes. Now get out of this.
Thank you. All right. So, again, anybody else that has not spoken?
But it's not on this, so it's only going to be taxed, so...
All right. So, should we have our attorney kind of give us a...
If you'd like. That's what she's here for. If you have questions...
I appreciate that. I have an apartment upstairs and at home who...
No, actually, I meant the attorney. The item is coming up for you.
This is a question that you guys are happy to answer. What topic?
You heard track and trace. Could you elaborate on that? Could you come up so the folks at home can...
So, all cannabis products that are in the legal market are tracked and traced by one program. It doesn't matter if you're in the medicinal realm or you're in the adult use. It's one track and trace program. So, really within a cultivator that has a medicinal title can still do business with a manufacturer that has an adult use title or license. One of the main distinctions is at the retail level. That's really where it comes down between adult use and medicinal license types and the distinction between the two. One thing to keep in mind is that now with the final regulations that have come into place, any delivery service can deliver into any other jurisdiction, regardless if there's a ban or they allow it or not. So one thing to think about is that if, Willets only allows for medicinal dispensaries. Well, someone who wants to order adult use products will order from an out-of-city operator and they will deliver it in, and that's how they'll get their adult use products. So, the retailers here will be at a big disadvantage in that sense.
So, let me pose you this question.
Sure.
And this is for, if I'm at the school and across the street is residential, because we have schools that kind of have that. Fast forward maybe a year from now where...
Sure.
Somebody says, "Well, I can't go to Willets and buy recreational," but the pizza delivery guy that's delivering marijuana, cannabis could technically deliver across the street from the school, and we could not prohibit that?
That's correct.
I have a question. Is the, as a dispenser, you have to be either adult use or medicinal but can't be both?
You can be both.
Okay, so that distinction of under eighteen or under twenty-one-year-olds having, I'm just not sure how that would work.
Sure, sure. So with a medicinal license, which would be essentially regulated by the local jurisdictions, that's where it's distinguished. You would, you can allow anyone who's eighteen and over with a physician's recommendation. If you're an adult use, you cannot allow anyone in under twenty-one. If you have both, then you can, you can have both. But it would have to be an eighteen-year-old with a physician's recommendation or a twenty-one and over.
Okay.
Would there be two doors?
No.
And all of the medicinal, anyone that has the doctor's recommendation, green card, whatever they call it?
Yeah.
Those sales are not subject to sales tax?
They're exempt from sales and use tax.
But the adult use dispensaries, if they're selling to people without a green card, those are, okay.
That is correct.
It's very confusing.
It's very confusing.
And that card's issued by the state, right?
Well, yes, so...
Versus the ones you, versus the doctor's recommendation?
There's, yeah, so there's a county-issued card that you can get that's issued by the government, or you can get a physician's recommendation as well. And those can be...
Does one, I think at one point, one allowed you not to pay tax versus one you had to pay tax.
I'm not sure. So the medicinal product that you're purchasing is what the exemption, the sales and use tax exemption covers. So if you're buying a medicinal product, which will have, you know, could potentially have higher limits, that, that transaction will be exempt from sales and tax.
And I'm on the Vegas City's floors and one of the, one of the alerts that came out is that a lot of cities are now upset about this.
Right.
Because, and I think I mentioned in a prior meeting, that there were a lot of cities that out now banned it, and they're upset because now anybody can deliver, even though they banned it in their city. There are some cities that banned outside delivery because they wanted to protect their licenses, licensees within their city. And, and the crux of the legal cities, I think, argument is they don't wanna lose local control. So whether you were against it or you wanted to protect your businesses, et cetera, they didn't wanna cede that control of the state. And it's my understanding they're mounting a legal challenge. Do you have any idea how, whether that stands a chance or not?
I would say it stands a chance. I don't, I can't really comment on if it'll be successful. I don't really know. But I, I mean, I think it's a valid claim to bring, so we'll see.
There's another question. It was in the staff report too, that a lot of places that are dealing with medical and, or maybe just people don't wanna pay the sales tax, they can, they can just have some doctor hanging out, you know, outside the store saying, "Oh, yeah, I'll give you, I'll write it up for you," you know?
Yeah, that's no longer allowed. And, and so most jurisdictions, local jurisdictions too, will have that in their ordinance saying you can't have a doctor on site, you know, handing out prescriptions.
Okay, but you can still go to a doctor that...
Right.
That you know is sympathetic and get a...
Sure. You can go to a doctor and get a prescription for your anxiety and then go, yeah.
Thank you. Answers that question.
Do you have a question for?
Yeah, I just want to comment. I believe it's, you can get a recommendation, but without a state-issued card, you won't be able to get tax exemption.
Okay, that's, I wondered about that.
All right. Up here, does anybody have questions? Attorney?
All yours.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you have a question for our attorney?
I don't, I'd just like to make one comment, if possible.
You know, I'm gonna close it. I, you know, I'm gonna close it for right now because I kinda cut everybody off just for sheer time. That's why I was trying to give everybody a chance, so I... So at this point, you are looking for...
So I'm looking for some staff direction. We have made some recommendations and we're just leaving it up to you. This is a policy decision. It's up to you. If you would like us to come back with an ordinance with some of the things that we talked about today, if you give us some guidance on that, we can do that so that we can have a public hearing on it.
I have a question, and maybe while I have the attorneys off here. So, let's say we rethink our buffer, because I think honestly, I was kinda surprised at the current application, just because I never thought that was gonna be the way there. And when we were looking at this, I looked at the fact of what we would require. So I figured that you'd never be able to smell it, you really wouldn't know what's there unless you obviously saw the sign that said it, but it wouldn't be in your face. And so folks have taken out applications, but we haven't issued them. If we rechange...
No, we've, we've issued permits.
Yeah, we've had these.
So, so we've issued permits, but so if we rethink our buffer, how does that work for the existing licensees?
Well, if someone bought a parcel of property and made a big investment and built a factory and hired employees, all because the piece of property that they selected was allowable for use as a cannabis manufacturing or something, and then we changed the rules and we make the buffer larger, so now they are too close to a school or something, I think that's a problem. They have, they would have a vested right to, to operate their business that they relied on. So I'm, I'm a bit concerned about changing the buffer rules. Our ordinance was, was properly enacted following lots of public discussion and it was approved in an appropriate process. And I think, I think that buffers that were selected were in fact, though, made upon the advice of committees who looked at other facilities and who were, who concluded that it is absolutely possible to have an odor-free facility.
And again, I asked that, I think I kinda knew the answer, but I kinda wanted to make sure that it was asked.
Wouldn't, if they had already been issued a permit under the existing ordinance, they would, it wouldn't be revoked because of the change, would it?
Right, that's...
So it would only be people that hadn't gone through the permit process yet?
That's true, but I'm also, I'm also thinking, what about those individuals who relied upon our, our ordinances and made big investments and then were changing the rules during the course of their application? I think we should be sensitive to that. It's certainly something we can talk about. If we come back here with a direction for staff to revise the ordinance in certain ways and to discuss and to make recommendations about possible changes to the buffer, then we can research that issue and be better prepared to give legal advice as to that specific issue.
Well, I can't help but wonder if, the two-hundred-foot buffer, if an applicant put in a facility with the understanding that, that we had a two-hundred-foot buffer and they invested, like you said, I can see where they might be frustrated because that's the ordinance. But what if we had an applicant that was putting in a facility that was, that is in an area that is less than, say, the state's six-hundred-foot space? And the applicant at some previous time may have come before the planning commission with expressing that they would put in something different than a cannabis facility there so that the understanding of the council at the time that we enacted the ordinance was that it was unlikely that something would go in that, in a particular zoning. Do we have any variance there if we had an applicant that fell into that type of...
Maybe so. I, I would, I would be reluctant to give a legal opinion on that on the spot without looking into it further, but that might be, that might be a factually distinguishable situation that, as opposed to our other example.
What if they, what if they offered a permit?
Yeah, I, I feel like if someone has already been issued a permit or license based upon established criteria and they relied upon that criteria and made a big investment and were issued a license, that, then if we change the buffers, it's like pulling the rug out from under them, and that would be something that we shouldn't take lightly.
I would, I would be interested in getting a legal opinion for the council in knowing that both options, if we had an applicant that came before the council prior to the enactment of the ordinance and both, you know, the other way that you had suggested.
We could do that.
If we could get an opinion for both.
I agree with you. I would support that as well.
Yeah, because I don't wanna put you on the spot right now to give us any, your legal opinion. I think it'd be easier if you got something, so...
Can we define the parameters of that question? I mean, I'm not even clear with the, but let's, can we, make sure we're really clear with the question.
Well, I think one was, changes to the buffer as applied to someone who's been issued a license already, right?
Or, well, there's a permit.
Permit, and had not come before the planning commission, stating any other...
They don't, it's ministerial. So... I don't think we need, personally, I don't think we need, I don't, I don't want to get an opinion on that. To me, if they have gone through the process based on their existing ordinance, like somebody wants to put in a multifamily dwelling and they're in a multifamily dwelling zone...
Right.
And they've got their permit, and then we decided to rezone that later after they've already got a permit, they've got a permit, they're legal.
I, I agree with you. I think that, I think the more pertinent question is, what about changes to the buffer as to persons who have not yet been issued a permit?
That...
But may have been relying on our existing criteria?
Yes.
And if you'd like us to research the opinion on that specific issue, we could certainly do that.
I would make a, a recommendation, a staff recommendation for, as a motion, and then come back and visit when it comes time for that buffer zone. But this has nothing to do with the buffer zone.
Oh, you're, you're making a motion on the staff recommendation? Changes to the ordinance?
Recommended action.
Okay, got it. I mean, we, well, staff needs some direction on what to do. If they, if you want us to look at the buffer zone, we sort of need direction on that.
Right, but I'm just saying, right now, for this recommended action, and then we'll have another meeting on this.
Can we finish one topic, which I think is, we're, we're separate from what your motion, I, I agree with your motion and I'll second it later, but I think we should just say that we want direction from our legal counsel on whether we would be... Whether you can change... Running, yeah. Whether you can change the buffer zones? Yeah, the legal implications of changing... For people who have not yet received a permit...
But are applicants.
But who are applicants for a permit, but... Or maybe... And have expended a certain amount of resources. Is that, does that capture what you...
I, I think that's one, that is one thing that I would like to see. Maybe, I'm trying to figure out how to word this differently. I'm looking for a legal opinion about, whether it's cannabis or otherwise, about the use of property if somebody came before council stating a different use of property. I'm not sure I'm wording that properly.
I think that maybe if you define the procedure by which you came before council, was it, was the council sitting as a planning commission? Was the, like, and what, what kind of decision was it that it came before council? Maybe that would be helpful.
I think what she's getting at is that if someone comes to council and proposes one use for a piece of property, and everyone says, "Okay, that sounds good." And then we make our ordinance, which has very set limitations for how far these businesses can be from a school, and then they're not using that property for the use that they said they were going to do, and instead it's a cannabis facility. Well, if we change the distance, then it, it wasn't really something that, that they were looking at in the first place, right? So...
They still have to go through the hurdles of, of going in front of the planning commission or going through planning and whether, if you were gonna put a tire shop, excuse me, where, as he's gone, okay? You're gonna put in a tire shop and then you change your mind to go to cannabis, you can't do that because you gotta go through Dusty. You have to go through planning.
Okay.
At that time, that's the buffer for us on the council, is that you have to believe in your staff is smart enough to figure out it's not gonna be a tire shop anymore. Excuse me for anybody that's on a tire shop.
Well, I think we know which business we're talking about here, but, but the question I have is, to what extent does somebody who owns property who has not yet gotten a permit but believes that their property is outside the buffer zone and...
And we change the buffer zone.
And we change the buffer zone. You know, where, where are our, is our whole... And we change the buffer zone, you know, where are, is our vulnerability legally in changing our policy? We're going to be doing it with zoning when we do rezonings, happens all the time, but I don't know, are we.
Is it grandfathered?
Vulnerable to some.
Okay, and I think I understand the question and reluctant to give you a instant opinion on this, but would welcome the opportunity to do some careful legal research on it.
Yes. And it may be different if they had already said what they were going to use it for, but they didn't have a permit yet for that either.
Well, the importance is, is when we were talking about zoning and where we were going to allow it and the buffer, that the council had extensive conversation about what was within the buffer. We had many maps up here, we looked at if we did 200, 400, 600, what businesses were going to be impacted, and there were certain areas that would have been potentially zoned for cannabis, but there was an understanding by, I believe, many of us that some of those areas already had specific use, so there maybe was less concern, although I was, the reason I did not vote for the cannabis, the number one reason I didn't vote for the ordinance was, in fact, the 200-foot buffer. I stood steadfast in the fact that I didn't feel like 200 feet was sufficient.
So was that, I think that's clear enough, and then I would like to second Larry's motion.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a mo, I'm just going to clarify because I'm trying to, I want to come back with. So we've had some recommendations from council, from staff regarding some of the changes in state law and to make, to change with the ordinance, to come back to you for our public hearing. I think that you want to hear some legal opinions regarding buffer zones. We will likely come back with the ordinance as for the existing, we're just going to leave the existing buffer zones at the time of the public hearing. If you folks want to revisit that, you can do that at that time. How does that sound?
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Is that, got that?
Again, my original concern had to do with, we changed the rules on folks, and I just want to make sure I've found any way, and so I don't want to get people's hopes up too high legally, we're, that ship has sailed, I guess.
Right.
And maybe we should come back, when we do come back with some proposed changes to the ordinance, we can actually, staff can actually look into the legal part of it and maybe give you some, a staff report on it, so we can talk about it in a little more detail.
Well, and secondly, Larry's motion, I wanted to, I think, just sum up, I think what we're talking about is cleaning up some of the references, so that our references to state regulation or law are consistent. There were a number of those that Dusty pointed out. The, looking at the distinction between medical and adult use, and probably, I think it's appropriate to consider the manufacturing, other than the dispensary part of it, that we want to open that up.
So staff, well, staff would like direction on that, too. If you, so this is a good time for you guys to let us know.
Well, I'm going to go through the other.
Okay, are you interested, because I've also heard that some interest in the community and in, on this, I asked whether you want us to open up dispensaries as well to adult use or to take one off, so we need some direction.
Okay, so that would be another, right now, I thought we were just talking about.
Because we suggested a lot of things, but it included removing.
Okay.
Medical only.
So we need to clarify that for staff direction. Nurseries and grow activities on the same property as long as they're within certain square footages, that was one of the other things that you're going to clarify, opening the, making it possible to have veterinary products be part of the.
Well, and one of the, one of the issues with the medical versus the adult use is, in my looking at dispensaries, I have, you know, I'm involved in a lot of animal rescue and horse training and all sorts of things, and people are increasingly using cannabis products for their animals. That can only be obtained, that I know of, in an adult-use surroundings. You cannot, you cannot buy those in, I don't, because, I mean, the human would have to get a card and go into the facility, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. I don't know how that would work if you get a card where my dog needs CBD oil, so.
And the last thing I had on my list was that the volatiles, the class, or the type seven use, and, but, but I personally think that we should allow adult-use dispensaries, and that would also open it up for veterinary products. And I would like to see, maybe we could have the staff report, give us some pro in time, or not.
It's up, so you tell us. We're the, we're just staff, you guys make the policy. I can give recommendations, but it really is up to you.
So Larry, your original motion was a staff recommendation.
Yeah, just, my original thing was what it says, recommended action.
And we would likely come back with removing the medical restriction. That's what staff would come back.
So direct.
Unless you direct me otherwise.
That's correct. That was my motion.
And I second.
So that's direct staff to complete and identify recommended revisions to chapter 1785, medical cannabis activities, but will it zoning code and bring matter back for council consideration in public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
But this doesn't say anything about the, was it M7?
Yeah, that's kind of where I was.
So code seven, the.
We would come back with a change. We would come back with that change as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like to speak before we take a vote or give direction, and I'd like to say that I don't support giving this direction to staff. I feel like, as I look around the room, it goes with, it hasn't, it's worth noting that the majority of the people that are here in the council chambers are people that have a financial interest in us giving staff direction. I mean, you all financially, the majority of you financially benefit by having the council, by the council, by having the council move this direction. I think that the, that sometimes there can be the, the lack of people in the community that don't, that are not sitting there in objection. It can appear that, that the majority or many of the people in Willets are in favor of this, and I just, I think it's worth pointing out. In the, let's see, page two of the agenda summary, second paragraph of page two, it says, "We've been informed that it will become a significant burden to these businesses to limit their production." And that seems to really be the basis of the reason that we're discussing cannabis here today. And I know before when we talked about it, it was more about the fact that we wanted to make sure our ordinance, which we discussed for a good year, solid, at least a year at every meeting, and then we finally passed an ordinance, and that the reason that it was going to come before us again today was because we wanted to be in compliance, but really, we're not talking about so much about compliance as we're talking about trying to change our ordinance so that it is less of a burden on these types of businesses. And then going further into that paragraph, it talks about, "In addition, staff has realized that if the city keeps the distinction, it will be up to the city to enforce with both code enforcement and police," and that we have realized that it's virtually impossible and extremely burdensome, and that worries me that that wording is, is in the staff report, because initially, when we agreed, I didn't agree, but the council agreed, to pass the ordinance, we were reassured that, that we could, we could monitor this business, that we could, we could keep it safe for the community, so I don't like the fact that it feels like we've gone the other direction in our, in our statement. Let's see, moving towards the bottom of the document, staff is not recommending loosening of the stringent zoning. I worry that we're talking about zoning, we have zoning coming up, it's a, it's a big issue, and how we zone is going to have an impact on the greater vision of what Willets looks like. I've heard people talk this evening about, you know, what is the vision for, for Willets? And we've talked as a council about what our vision is, but we need to take into mind that the actions that we take related to cannabis are going to play into the greater vision of what we want it to look like. First, we talked about, okay, we're going to bring medical cannabis in, and now we're talking about, okay, let's bring in adult use, and then let's add type seven, and let's have dispensaries, and then is the next step, are we going to have more dispensaries? Are we going to then allow outdoor gross? You know, there has to be, we have to think about the, the community impact beyond just these facilities. There is an impact to the community, and to not recognize the fact that there truly is an impact to the community. I'm all for medical cannabis, I understand the importance of it, I have a member of my family that has seizures, I get it, but it's really about making sure that, that the cannabis isn't getting in to the wrong hands, and keeping it away from, for me, away from our main street, and particularly, the buffer was critical for me in approval of it, and so I'm very much in favor of, of increasing that buffer, and I'm looking forward to the, to the legal opinion, but I'm not, I don't feel compelled to move forward with the, the recommended action of item number one, rather, item number two, determine that there's no changes needed or warranted, and if you want, hold a public hearing, and let's hear more from the public before we come back with a recommendation on what we want to do, because I don't feel like we really had a fair representation of our public today. I appreciate that a lot of the folks that have these businesses came out, and you gave some valuable information about what it's like to run a cannabis business, but we didn't see much of, of the general public here today, because they didn't fully understand what was happening tonight, so I would be hesitant to, to give a recommendation that gives an impression that we're going this direction, but rather just hold a hearing with the topic of cannabis, and that's where I would prefer to see us go.
Did you have anything?
No. Yeah, I wanted to ask Pat Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, you said that you have, that there is a strict track and face requirement at the state.
Yes, ma'am.
But isn't it true, I, maybe clarifying, is it true that businesses that are, say, manufacturing or processing or dispensing cannabis can do so with any, with, with other businesses, whether or not they're adult or medical? So if you're in Willets and you're only supposed to be producing a medical product, but you're sending it to some other facility that does both, does the state track and trace that?
Yes, ma'am, everything's track and trace, but that's, but that's not what my restriction is. My restriction is in the labeling issue. I have to label it with, in accordance with my license. My license is a medical license by the state because Willets says that's the only thing I can do here. So, so I'm required to label my products as a medical product, which we're very happy with, but we have a problem, and as I described with the THC, and so we have, we're restricted in that way.
Can I ask you that, that's the same question?
Yeah.
If our businesses here that are already established legally through our ordinance are doing business with other legal businesses elsewhere in the state.
Right.
That don't require medical only, are we hamstringing them by having, if we keep that distinction?
And we're not talking dispensaries, we're talking.
Not, yeah, not dispensaries.
So you're saying if there's a medical cultivator who wants to sell product to a adult-use manufacturer.
Right.
They could do that.
So then they are medical only. Yeah, under state law, they can do that.
But the packaging point is a legal point, so then the manufacturer needs to ensure that the product is for medicinal use only, and then that's going to go to a medicinal dispensary and then to a medicinal customer. So.
So it basically is, is making it, it's greatly reducing the options that any manufacturer or processor or grower here can do, how they can do business elsewhere in the state.
Yeah, there are some limitations, yes.
Yeah, that's, that was my question.
The overall market for, currently, is smaller, so.
Yeah, and I think our first speaker said that it's like roughly 10 to 20% of the market is medical only.
My license, when issued from the state, will say medical.
Correct, that's correct.
Because of.
Because I have investors, and I've been the president of a billion-dollar company. I will protect them and run a business perfectly, which means if they come to me and leave, we'll all be licensed and we're done properly, right? So if, me, manufacturing point of view, if you want to see revenue from manufacturing business, that I do not own it or sell it, we are a labor business, we process, four people, purify, distill those components, we don't buy or sell. You will limit the volume that will go through our business if you limit us to medical. We will not legally be able to take in anything because of our license says medical.
Okay, thank you.
So, ma'am, what that does is that will force me to take that, that THC, which is a.
Yeah, I think we got that part.
We got that. Tammy, you, you made it up here.
Found my legs.
I told you I'd like you to talk if you came up here, so.
So what concerns me is I hear a motion and a second on what a couple of you already indicated is a flawed ordinance, so I guess I'm asking Jim, is this something, I mean, that you found, that, I'm sorry, I didn't write down which one of you said it, but it's been said that this was a flawed ordinance and there are too many changes, and I think, Jim, we're kind of stuck once we've, once they voted on this, correct?
No, no.
Actually, let me go with Jim.
So our ordinance, just like any other ordinance, can be amended, and it takes a two-step process. When you adopt an ordinance, you have two readings, you have a reading to introduce it, all of the vex speeding to adopt it, and then it becomes effective 30 days later. The same way with a motion to, with an amendment, if you have an existing ordinance, it may be amended, and, and it's appropriate to do so. We shouldn't have to stick with some ordinance that becomes antiquated or no longer complies with applicable state law. So because of some changes in the state law, staff is recommending that we make appropriate changes to our 17-month-old ordinance to make it compatible.
Okay, so that's my misunderstanding. I thought you were saying this was your second reading.
No.
This is not, this is the first.
We don't even have a proposed ordinance, amendments before us. This is directing staff to bring us something, which then we'll have another public hearing.
I understand that, I remember that.
Tammy, we already have an ordinance, this is before us to see if we would like to amend our current ordinance.
Okay. My, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought somebody said it was a second reading, and that's why I got a little bit jumpy and took my old legs up here.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion, a second, and some discussion, and I'll tell you where I'm at. I, I'm not, I guess what I was looking to do in the future, you know, fast forward from last, is it last year? Yeah, that, when we passed this, that I wanted some, some history, that our applicants' permitees were following the rules, that they were not becoming obnoxious to our residents, that we weren't getting those complaints. It sounds like Tim's mom's complaint isn't one of our applicants, somebody that's probably either operating outside the law or whatever, and, and the intent was that, as we went with this ordinance, that we would also be able to have the staff to go after those that didn't play by the rules or were outside the rules, so that we could do that. Because I got to tell you, it was a cat and mouse game before, where John Sherman would chase after folks, send them letters based on what we had, and frankly, it was kind of ineffective in my mind, and nothing against John, it was just the system in place. What I've heard from a lot of folks in the industry is that as people moved into the legal realm, that the illegal realm has taken a big hit, and I've heard that from a lot of folks out there, that it's not, not as lucrative out there in the, the illegal world as it was a couple of years ago. Again, from some realtors, that the price of bare land has gone down quite a bit. So it sounds like the legal players that are playing by these rules, at least in our municipality, have been playing right, and in that respect, I, well, I'm not comfortable yet with the dispensaries, because I haven't seen one up and. yet with the dispensaries, because I haven't seen one up and running to, to go that route. I, I think that if the state's not going to make a distinction, and that, again, I'd, I'd like to see it, allow both within the manufacturing, that aspect of it. Obviously, that's my, my opinion there, so, but I guess I would agree for now to move it very slightly.
Can I make one comment? I did like the note that you made regarding having put into the ordinance no doctor on site that would write on the spot prescriptions. I think that would tighten up our medical dispensaries, and I would be in favor of that.
Okay.
Okay. I don't want, like, fly-by-night prescriptions being handed out in front of the dispensary, so if that's something that, you know, legal seems to think would be good in our ordinance, I, I like that.
But to clarify, I've got a motion, a second, on making, coming to you with proposed changes to the ordinance, which would include losing the medical distinction, but to the extent that somebody, you know, it's, it's going to be an application process, whoever the, whoever wins the, the most points to get one of the three spots, we're probably going to put in our proposed ordinance their choice, whether they have medical or non-medical, but no doctor on site, whatever you have, there'll be no doctor on site.
Yes.
So that's what it's, I'm going to come back with unless I get directed otherwise. Thank you. Okay.
To be clear, I'm not directing you to do that.
I understand, but if this.
Just for clarification.
The motion on the table. I'm just clarifying what the motion on the table is. Okay, so.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
No.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
We will come back as, when we put something together, you know, for a public hearing.
I know that we've got some folks waiting for the tax thing, but do we, anybody need to take a break?
I'm sorry.
Let's make it five, five minutes. We are now on item 3C, discussion and possible action approving a resolution to establish the initial business license tax rates for cannabis businesses. Is this a Dusty thing again?
Yay, Dusty, yeah. No, so this is, you introduced the item, thank you, Mayor. So, as you recall, the council approved a resolution proposing a cannabis tax ordinance, also known as Measure I, and that went in front of the voters at Willet's in November. The voters passed Measure I with a 74.68 voter approval, effectively authorizing an excise tax on cannabis businesses. That ordinance established a maximum tax rate to be applied to, to a variety of cannabis businesses, and also identified some initial tax rate to take effect upon adoption of resolution by the council. The council has authority to change the rates at their prerogative, provided they stay under the maximum tax, tax rates that were established by the voters. The ordinance further calls for the initial tax rate set to, to be established for initial term of, of two years, and again, that's to provide some certainty to the, degree of certainty to the cannabis businesses and assist in their business planning efforts. With your packet today, you have the agenda summary, the staff report, an attachment, attachment A, which is a resolution for your consideration tonight, which includes some recommended initial tax rates. You also have attachment B, which shows some comparable cannabis tax rates for jurisdictions near us, as well as attachment C, which is actual, the actual business tax ordinance or Measure I. The, you'll notice that there's a wide variety, well, let me say that, the way the tax works is you establish an excise tax for businesses other than cultivation, for cultivation including nursery, you establish a tax rate that's applied based on the square footage of, of the canopy for the business. So for instance, if an applicant receives a permit to grow up to 10,000 square-foot canopy of cannabis, you would then apply that square-footage tax rates times the 10,000. So if it was a dollar, you'd be collecting an annual tax of $10,000. The other rates are based on, on, on your gross sales receipt. A couple of things to keep in mind as you're setting the rate, I think we were sort of talking earlier amongst staff, and you're sort of trying to find that sweet spot where you're, you're encouraging the retention and growth of businesses, as well as, as bringing in new businesses, but not having it so high to where it's essentially a burden. So there can be a situation where you might actually collect more on a 1% tax than you would on a, a 4% tax. So that's where we sort of talked about trying to, to find that, that balance. You know, it's also important, and I'd like to maybe hear from, from some of our applicants, some of these businesses can deal with, in, in sales, or they could simply just be providing a service, so, and, and you know, I, I have to say, as I try to figure these things out, just as soon as I think I might have figured something out, then I get some new information that tells me I might not quite be right. So I'm really glad to have Elizabeth here, and I'm glad that we've got some very knowledgeable applicants in the room as well. But again, sort of thinking about the idea of, of how your established tax rates might affect the activities that certain businesses conduct. So for instance, with, say, distribution, a distribution company may simply just be providing a service, say, you can pay me to take product that you purchased from a cultivator and deliver it to a manufacturer or retail. In that sense, we are taxing them based off of their price of, of providing that service. They charge $3,000 for that, so we're going to get X percentage of that $3,000. Distribution company might also be interested in buying bulk product and then distributing it further out. At that point, they've bought, you know, a million dollars of product every year, and then they've done something to it, and then added value to it, and then dispersed it to other entities. In that case, you're collecting a tax based off of that million dollars of sales. And so what I think might be correct, and I'm looking around, is my, is my, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, you know, a business may choose to, to just offer minimal services based on the tax rate, and then choose to do some of the larger transactions in a different jurisdiction that has a lower tax rate. So again, we're just trying to find that balance, and I think you'll hear from some of our existing cannabis businesses tonight as to, you know, where that balance might be. I think there's a strong interest in paying a tax because they're looking to be accepted by the community, but they also, we also have to recognize that they're being taxed relatively heavily at the state level, they also, because it's still not legal on the federal level, they don't get a lot of the tax advantages that a normal business would. So they're sort of facing some disadvantages as they try to, to get going, so certainly that's, I think, something that we've already been sensitive of in establishing relatively low rates. I mean, you'll see that some jurisdictions have established no tax, and let me just provide a little insight on that based on, on discussions with those jurisdictions. In some cases, it was a conscious decision not to tax, partly because they only had maybe one or two businesses. Other jurisdictions basically just haven't gotten to it yet, so that no tax is, there's a little bit of story to that. As you head further south, that's where you start to see a lot of higher taxes beyond what you see on your list here, but the trend has been, those people that have established initial tax rates are actually in the process of, of lowering them to stay competitive. So that's, that's, that's what I had for you.
I have a question, Mr. You define manufacturer, which I see as missing.
Define manufacturer.
I'm following your.
So under the, I'm not sure what you mean by missing. Page three of the staff report says manufacturing recommended starting rate 2.5%, it's in the resolution too. The definition of manufacturing is found in our ordinance.
Our commercial cannabis ordinance, 17.85.
Correct.
Of the tax ordinance.
But does it separate non-ownership or taking possession as opposed to merely handling and processing?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at it, I haven't looked at that.
I, you know, I, I know a little bit about Mr. Doyle's model, and, and there'll be a public comment here in a second, but, you know, my understanding is whether you're taking a raw product and manufacturing, or something else, or, the intent is, is that if you're, if you're, because Mr. Doyle's business, they're able to actually take essentially dirty oil or contaminate it and clean it up, which is a, is a, like, a very wonderful and unique service, but the, the cost that he would charge for doing that, the intention is, is that we would tax that, and it would fall to manufacturing, but, but see how there's a lot of little nuances, and, and I, you know, as, as, as you're, things are going to, again, it's going to, things are going to shift, and we'll probably be having to fine-tune our ordinance to make sure that we're capturing tax dollars where we intend to.
Matt and I were just briefly, right before we started, the vertical thing that was brought up early, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, we were, one of our applicants specifically was trying to understand how we would approach a situation of taxing businesses that, they're basically tied together. So for instance, if you have a, a situation where you have a, one business owner entity, and they own the cultivation, they own the distribution facility, they own the manufacturing facility, are we trying to tax them along each step of the way? I, I don't have a, a clear answer for you. I, I can say that, that we've, we've put it out there, and we're, we're seeking guidance to get clarification on that, and so I think one, one of the things we can talk about today is what the intention of the council is, but there could be, very well be a situation where, you know, myself is a, if I'm in all three businesses, I'm not going to charge myself for my own services, right? And so, you know, if a cultivator, if the cultivator sells their product to the distributor, well, first off, we're taxing on a square footage, so we're not getting gross sales off of that. But then the distributor's providing a service, right? There's a, an added value to the product because maybe they're trimming it, maybe they're packaging it, certainly they're, they're taking care of the responsibilities that legally fall on the distributor, they're making sure it's been tested by a third party, et cetera. Well, maybe they, they trim it, and then part of that goes to the manufacturer. Well, they're not selling it to themselves, right? But then the manufacturer now has made a, an added value product, and they're going to sell it. Well, at that point, we're going to capture the gross sales from the manufacturer, which includes the added value along the way. So in that situation, it might be a mute point. One of the things I'm concerned of, that I wasn't aware of when I wrote this, is we also might have a situation where that exists, but the distributors in Willet's and the manufacturers in Santa Rosa. And so now the, now the manufacturer is not charging their own distribution service, and now essentially, we're not collecting any tax on that business that's there. And so that might be a reason to just establish a minimum tax, and say, even if you're not reporting any gross sales, but essentially, you're a business that's only serving your other entities, and that's where it might be smart to just have a minimum tax. And again, like, this is all stuff that's sort of, just sort of coming up recently, so. Land use planners don't have a lot of experience in taxes.
I've seen some jurisdictions address the affiliated entity or related entity issue by specifically excluding receipts and not taxing those transactions between related entities from their definition of gross receipts. So that's one way you could do it, but you could do it as put it as an exclusion, that would be excluded from the definition of gross receipts.
And they would have to kind of, when they apply, they'd have to kind of basically explain, this is what we're doing, so that we would not be.
Yeah, yeah, full disclosure to Dusty or whomever would make that more clear, and then you could define affiliated or related entities, however you see fit, so if, you know, you have to have at least 80% ownership of the same entity, or whatever you decide.
So that someone isn't hypothetically saying, well, it's passing here, you know, it was here, but it's there now, and, sorry, Willet's, we didn't pay you any taxes because...
Right. Yeah, I mean, it would definitely still be tracked throughout the entire movement of the product, but just tax would not be assessed if it was between affiliated entities, so that it's not taxed all the way through if it's a vertically integrated company or business.
So would that even, again, so I get this right?
Yeah.
Something's happening in Willet's.
Oh, that's a different situation.
Their other hand is down in Santa Rosa.
Right.
And, and I guess the way I look at it, this, the whole idea behind this, and sorry, folks, if I'm not trying to be greedy, but I'm just trying to make sure that as you guys, as you guys do your business here, that the whole idea for me with the excise tax was that you're going to be using our roads, you're going to be technically using our services, and that we're trying to kind of recoup some of that, so that as a city, we, we don't lose out, because there is a, I'll call it leakage that happens, whether you were doing cannabis or growing tomatoes in town, and, you know, some of that we never get to capture, and in this case here, we're trying to capture it. At least that's my intent, is that, you know, whether it be the police or the fire department impacts, et cetera, that there's a lot of stuff that happens behind the scenes that, frankly, I want to make sure that we're still able to provide those basic services, and so.
Right. So in your definition of engaging in business or conducting business within the city of Willet's, you can include using our streets, you know, to deliver products. That way, that would give you the physical presence and nexus required in order to tax those businesses that would be coming in from a different jurisdiction.
Would that also work hypothetically for deliveries from out of the?
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm still a little concerned that.
Right.
Whatever we decide down the road, that there'll be some folks coming and going with their pizza delivery rigs and.
Right. So in the ordinance, again, you would just want to make sure that you define engaging in business here, the city of Willet's, as using the streets or some other kind of low threshold of physical presence and nexus here, and then you would be able to tax those businesses doing business here.
And for the press here, I'm not trying to besmirch the pizza folks out there, I'm kind of using that.
I was just thinking of Uber Eats.
That's, we saw a demonstration of an app where there was a business that we visited that was using an app in the area to visit their medical that way, and so I kind of wondered how long before it branched off, and apparently it looks like it's.
It's here.
It's here. Sorry to monopolize you, but does anybody else want to ask her questions, I wish she's up at the table.
I, I just would like a little bit of clarification, so you're saying we could set a low threshold for taxation for businesses coming in, but again, what about those where they're sending products out? How?
So, the way that the ordinance or the tax structure is right now, is those businesses, when they have a sale or service, they would be taxed on that if they're operating.
If they're giving to themselves where they have, I mean, another entity in Santa Rosa first. Like, it's vertically integrated, but they have two separate locations, and there's, you know, we don't want to triple tax them, and they're just saying, oh, we're just sending it down here, how are we?
Right. It's kind of up to you guys, however you would want it. If you want to tax in that situation, or if you, if you don't, you may want to say, you have to be operating on the same premises for those, for the vertical integration. Or, yeah, that's.
County, maybe?
Yeah, or same county. Yeah, that would be.
City.
Right. Yeah, you'd want to say, you know, you have to be vertically integrated and within Willet's, both operations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But then, if they are vertically integrated, but their location for, say, the dispensary is somewhere else, or whatever it is that they're selling, that they, they are sending it to their own company but elsewhere, then are we relying on them to estimate what the value was when it left Willet's, so that we have that as sales.
You mean in a situation where they're, they're selling it to a business elsewhere, we're going to collect it at the point of sale.
But if it's their.
If, if they're providing a free service to themselves, then that's where I'm, I'm concerned, is you might have a business that has no disclosed gross sales.
Okay. I mean, but if you have one company that has an office here, or is doing part of their product development here, but they also have an office in Ucayau or Santa Rosa or whatever, and they are transferring their product at some point in, in this process, I, I'm just finding, I don't even know what question to ask.
Right. I think that's, that's what Dusty's concerned, is that that could be a loophole.
So, but I, I sort of understood, and maybe I have it wrong, so I just want to clarify, that if you have this vertical, the vertical business in Willet's, then they get a break because they're helping themselves with this product, they will eventually have a
because they're helping themselves with this product that will eventually have a transaction tax within Willets. However, if their vertical integration leaves Willets, they no longer get that break. They will then be taxed. And so they get sort of a penalty for going outside for doing the second half of their business. But, so we wanna encourage people to do as much business as they can within Willets because then they can start, they can get tax breaks because of the vertical break. That's what it is. They'll get a tax break for doing the, the vertical business within Willets. Does that make sense?
Yeah, definitely.
I think that will help. That might help clarify some of our questions.
Why don't you come on up?
I will.
If you could state your name again for the record.
Michael Doyle with Modular Processing Systems. A bit, we're discussing a lot about how the refining industry struggled with it is, you don't charge taxes along the way in the, in the end where you're finally gonna have a fuel to pump. The state does make a distinction in our business if you own or sell the product or not. So we fall into the C D F A, there's the B C C, for example. In our model, for example, we are strictly a process, a service business. Half of our cost, half of our fee, we're gonna charge our costs. So a gross overall tax would be very difficult. As this business matures, it is just going to be a business with normal taxes and even profits. In 24 months, about then, if you don't have your costs in line, you're, you're just where you've vertically integrated, you've shrunk transportation costs, you have volumes in place, you will not make it when you're trying to survive on, say, abnormally high margins in the beginning. We're also fighting still the large illegal operations that are driving prices down. So whatever happens in taxation, there also needs to be enforcement. So, that has to be controlled so that prices normalize again. But in our business, the distinction is made, since we do not own or sell, buy or sell, we're just a service business, we are seeing that we have different deductions that are more normal to businesses, that they haven't taken away if you own or, you know, buy or sell a cannabis product. We would like to see the taxes a little bit the same way, take into account some of our costs as opposed to just some flat gross number. It would just be an artificially large tax when half of our stuff is costs. But anyway, that's my thoughts. That is our model, we are all completely here in, in Willets, and we will stay that way and be in a service business, we think. Our pull to the business is that we can refine a product perfectly, as Glenn has been doing, to pharmaceutical grade, and that will bring some of these businesses around us, to us eventually. But once things go more legal, our business will be helped to normalize because right now, people are still moving products that are non-ad compliant.
So I have a question for you. Obviously from the enforcement aspect of it, we can only deal with our little island, so I can't help what's happening statewide or whatever. But what would you say is fair?
Well, I, I know, for example, our costs, if, if we charge a certain amount of dollars per gram or liter, about 50% of our costs are the raw materials to purify, labor costs. We run a business where we charge for capitalized products, depreciation on our equipment, all of that. So, we're seeing people throwing around 2% to 4% numbers on gross receipts. And, and, you know, I think that was thrown around where people are moving cannabis products with margins that can support that. A lot of those margins are collapsing. But in our business, a service business, we look more like any other business that you see running in here. The only difference is going to be, because of the pull that we have in this industry, our volumes are gonna be large. So if our business comes to maturity and we process the kind of volumes that I anticipate, Brett's business, for example, is tossing around volumes that are gonna cause me to buy maybe $10 million in equipment to supplement that building, then our overall sales of stuff will go up, our costs will be about still the same, our per unit costs might come down, but, but certainly a gross overall tax number would still be incorrect for us.
So again, I think my question was...
It might be in the 1% number of gross, which is really saying, if you're looking at 2, you're really acknowledging that half of our, our number that we take in is cost. That if I had to throw something out without thinking, I'm a little bit like your attorney that likes to have a moment to think, but...
But again, this is, I guess I don't wanna be accused of, I was unfair, so, I mean, you're here today, so I'm sorry, I'm gonna take advantage of you.
Oh, I don't mind. And what you should know, if you haven't looked, she could certainly answer some of this for you, but there's, it's a complex accounting side. The minute the cannabis business started, the state, I mean, we haven't seen what the federal government did, but the state took away a lot of deductions that we in normal business can, can deduct for our bottom line. I'll give you a silly one and some of the dispensary, correct me if I'm wrong, but labor in the dispensary, and I'm not in that, is not deductible. So there's a lot of things that are, that are really strange because they said, you've got these abnormal margins, let's take away more of your deductions. And, and so they're, 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 they're in effect already collecting a myriad of taxes indirectly by taking away things that change your taxable income. And it's very complex. We have, because our business is growing, we've taken on quite a few professionals to look at this, to let you know, we're banking at a normal bank because we do not own or sell cannabis. Our money is in chase, so.
For you, we counsel cannabis for Emerald City. Now that I don't want to pay less tax, but maybe, maybe this is, maybe this can be simpler because the license system from the state is kind of license dependent. So, I, I mean, yeah, on my property, we have distill, we have cultivation, and we're gonna try to process and packaging too, but each licensee should still be treated as individual licensees. And even I move product from my cultivation to process and packaging, I need to file the paperwork and do the track and trace and make sure we properly record that and all the custody transfer has to be recorded. So, so I feel, if, I mean, to keep it simple, I think I'm all for just, when you're really talking about vertical integration, a cultivation license is already vertically integrated because you can grow and all the way to packaging to, by yourself, so you really don't have the problem. I mean, by the time it's sold, that's, that's your final product, you're already vertically integrated, same with manufacturer. When you buy product and you take it all the way to the end, that's, that's already vertically integrated. If you are processing packaging or distill, that's when it comes to a question of, I think it's more like a custody of product. You don't want, if you're buying all that product into our custody, then you sell all that, yeah, that, that gross receipt gonna be huge and your margin is gonna be super low on that. But mostly, that's gonna be a service provider, so they're only gonna charge the total receipt as the service charge, which again, kind of, you don't have the problem with that. So really, how I see is like micro business license, maybe it's vertical integration, but again, they can only do business among their lines, so they can only cultivate their product and sell their own product. So, again, it's kind of like the vertical integration already is all the way to the end, so I just feel like the tax need to be lower, that's for sure. You see Oakland pulling back in their taxes, you see the states passing bills that's gonna lower their taxes. The margin is not there anymore in this industry. It's gonna take probably a couple years to, to three, four years before the market crack itself again. So, how I see is kind of like a lot of distribution and moving volume of product. I mean, their margin is super thin, like maybe 10 cents, 50 cents per hundred dollars, but they're moving a lot of product. So if you guys can keep the tax rate low, I don't think anyone here is gonna be opposed of paying license, paying tax per license. That's the, the most straightforward way of doing this. And frankly, the state gonna look at you that way as well. Doesn't, you have a cultivation, you have distribution, doesn't mean you get any tax break for both entities. You're gonna pay tax on each individually. But the rate need to be low so people don't try to, you know, do crazy things to try to execute it. So, that's our view, so thanks.
Anybody else?
Brett Conning with Leaf Holdings. One of the things that we've noticed in looking at this is the volatility of the market. The market is pretty young. For example, back about eight months ago, we're selling at about $12 a gram for bulk distillate, and bulk distillate prices have now dropped down into the low sevens. And I think a lot of that has to do with, as Michael mentioned, a lot of the black market, gray market, plus there's a lot of money coming into the industry right now. There's a lot of investment dollars going into manufacturing, so the competition throughout the state is high. And I think that's putting a lot of pressure on the market to drive the prices down. The other issue is that you have this whole cultivation tax that the manufacturer's gonna eat. So for us, for example, when we go out and source the material that we make the oils from, we're gonna be paying a $44 per tax, $44 per pound tax. And so, the market isn't really going up at the end user, they're kind of stabilized. The dispensaries are only gonna take in so much, then it comes back down to distribution and then manufacturing and then the farms. So we have to also think about the tax pressure on the local farmer that we source from because if we set a certain margins, it's gonna enable us, or it's gonna inhibit us from, you know, paying fair market values to them. So it does put pressure on them as well. Also, the whole vertical integration for us, I like what the city manager had suggested. I think that, you know, that type of initiative where it passes through, and let's say we have a building, you know, we have a project we're looking at down in Sandy, Sandy Cento. With that type of tax, tax structure, it keeps us here, you know, selling to the final dispensary locally, so I think that's smart. I would say that, you know, at, at a first glance, you know, if the city could work with us, let's look and see where the market goes for a couple of years, look at a lower tax rate. You know, growth is important, more tax dollars, more margins for us to grow and expand, I think would be very important to keep that, to keep that cost down. Thank you.
Going, going.
Can I ask the...
Go ahead.
Okay, so I look at these recommended, recommended, kinda even talking now, recommended rates, and I see between 1% and 4%. And that seems pretty reasonable to me. That seems low. But do you all think that's not low enough? I mean, it sounds like you're saying, go lower!
1% is, 4% is...
Well, 4% is on dispensaries, so it doesn't sound like that would apply to any of you, right?
Well, it's on gross, so, I'm, I'm, yeah, so it's high because we're taxed from every, every single, every single entity in the state taxes. Everybody's taxing, there's fees all the way around. Like what you was talking about, the $44 on cultivation per pound, this is for shake, this is for trim. So you're starting out with, with a huge tax rate that makes it so the farmers don't get compensated. So, so if the yield is only so much, and the market only yields so much at the end result, right? So who takes, if, if the tax rate is set in stone, who takes the, the titan of the market? It's either the cultivator and the extractor who's, or distributor who's purchasing. And so, the farmer ends up getting such a small amount for their product as it goes down. And so, the more we tax, for, for our companies to grow without, without tax write offs and stuff, which are limiting us majorly on all this, for our companies to grow and employ people, we have to be able to be, so far in the state and everything, we're not taxed fairly. You know, there's tax in every direction. Like the guy who was saying earlier, he dealt with weapons of whatever for the government. The, the level of regulation is engineers, professionals being hired from every industry to come in and figure this out for local people. The, the more we regulate, which is good, we also make it really difficult for local people to be able to afford the kind of professionals we need just to get into compliance. You know what I mean? For all this stuff. And so the more we tax, the more we almost only allow corporate interests into our businesses here locally, because people can't afford to play. They can't, already, very few people around here can afford to play, play the game.
There's an average of a 65% tax on cannabis already.
At the end of the day, they're saying, yeah, it's like 50%.
And we're walking on the giant operations that are just hemorrhaging money every day that don't even make a dollar.
People are crying.
The incentive, you're taking the incentive from the farmer and he's going right back to the black market.
And the city already collects a, a gross receipt tax on all of our businesses, no matter what type of business we have. Well, with our, with our building, with our, with our...
We have a business license that's...
And it's based on gross receipts.
It's very, very low.
It is.
It's like extremely low. It doesn't pay for any of the services that...
The state license that's coming, we don't, I'll get the number, but I'm expecting a six-figure license to be coming. They haven't even told us, I'm budgeting, I'm budgeting a hundred grand for a state license.
I'm just gonna, I was just jumping here. While I understand that cannabis taxes are high, keep in mind that the city of Willets is actually the entity that is hosting you and actually providing all of the services for you. So, the state is not. And so I am, well, we are very sorry that the state charges too much, I sort of don't wanna subsidize the state because we are actually providing these services and this city is a very needy city. And we, obviously, I'm, I'm, I think that your argument is with the state and not with the city.
I've gone out of my way to argue everything.
But I, I think that we do wanna, we wanna be fair and competitive, and that's, and that's our goal. We wanna be fair and competitive and I think that that's what we're aiming for. So we're looking for a tax rate that's gonna, to help you, but it's not gonna be no tax and it's going to be a, a fair tax. And I think, looking at the chart of taxes, I think we've developed these really carefully so that our cultivation tax is actually lower than all of our just neighboring jurisdictions. And most of the taxes, we try to just be a little bit under what everybody else charges. So that was the intention. So, but if there are suggestions for some corrections to this, we're absolutely open to that. And I, I'm just gonna throw that out there.
You guys can change the rate again, right after the first two years?
Yes.
So, so why don't we keep it as low as possible right now, let everyone just have this two years window? I mean, I'm sure everyone here in their business is actually struggling, you know, I'm...
Yeah, sorry. But, so...
I, I just, just, sorry, just one, one more comment. Just feel like, I, I mean, it's, I think everyone here is poor taxed. I mean, everyone want to contribute to the city, everyone want to make this. Really, a lot of people don't like to hear it, but this has already been half, 50 years, so let's just open the curtain and make, make the city a name for it. Obviously, that's what, what we would like to see. And we, we're all for tax money, we're all for to, to build better roads, to build better, better schools, better, better everything. So, really what we need is just this, this is chaotic time right now, and this is not caused by the city, and you guys have been helping a lot. But I, I think all we're here, just give us some time, let, let's settle this down, let the market kind of flatten out a little bit. You guys have the right and have the ability to raise the tax later and, and when, if this, this is surviving or doing better and better, I'm sure we all want to pay more taxes. So, we're just hoping that we can maybe give us a, even a year or two year window, that would be awesome, when, when everyone else is just kind of want to kill this industry right now, so.
Kevin, you probably still have your, Sabrina, did you have a question for Kevin or Dusty?
For Dusty.
Okay.
So Dusty, I'm trying to turn out my brain around two, two things. When we had talked about rates before, we had somebody here that specialized in rates, I can't remember exactly how long ago it was, but I'm sure you, you...
The, the, the folks that were here when you were adopting the initial business tax ordinance?
Yes, so I'm referring to that conversation and, so you know where I'm referencing is, the rates were significantly different from the recommended rates. Now, what major factors contributed to the large difference in the rates?
So the, the current starting, if you look on page three of the staff report, under financial considerations, initial rates, it has a column that identifies the various different cannabis activities that are allowed in Willets. It sets the, shows the column with the maximum rate that's allowed by measure I as approved by the voters. They have the current starting rate that was rec, that was identified in that measure I. I'm just gonna stop for a second because you could still looking for page three there of the staff report.
Okay, I have one. Got it. Thank you. Quite a few pages.
So again... The maximum rate is established by the, by the business tax ordinance, Measure I, the current starting rates, which were identified and approved at that meeting, and then the recommended starting rates. So the only difference between what was established at that meeting and now is a reduction in the indoor cultivation tax from $7 a square foot down to, to $2.50. The other ones remain the same.
And what was the major factor in, in reducing it from 7 to 2.50?
To be consistent with, with what other jurisdictions around us were, were doing.
But when I look at other jurisdictions around, I see Lake County, $3. I see Santa Rosa, $5. Sonoma County, it's got $3.90 all the way up to $11.69. So I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to understand the logic and how we came up with $2.50.
I, I think it's, it's, it's a little bit arbitrary. It's a number between zero, which some places have, and then it's, it's a little bit lower than some of those other jurisdictions you just named. But again, I think we're trying, you know, I know Kevin's here, if we set it at $7, I don't know how many cultivators remain in Willets. At 2.50, it sounds like it's still a, a burden for them, but that's about as much logic as I can give you there.
I was just looking for some logic. Thank you.
And this would be basically between state taxes and the current market, if, again, assuming this is what, what's driving this. And this could easily change down the road, but like I said to everybody here, we don't deal with the enforcement end, and obviously I would like everybody to be compliant and not out by a litter weed from somebody growing in the national forest either, so.
I'm finding this, since I don't understand all of the nuances of which businesses do what and how much it costs them to do that business, and I do know that the market is very volatile and weak right now. So I'm kind of sympathetic to what Kevin was just suggesting, that especially if we're going to try to lock something in for two years in this very unknown territory that we're in, that we should start really low and maybe not lock it for two years, maybe in, like we did with the ordinance, let's find out how this actually plays out on the ground and how it affects our, our industry. But to start as, as low as possible with maybe only one year and then revisit it and say, things are looking optimistic or whatever, because I, and again, I really feel like this is way over my head, but, but that's my intuition on it, is kind of to not lock ourselves in for two years when things are so unknown and how things are going in the industry, and to keep our options open to raise it rather than to, that's, that's my personal...
Our ordinance addresses that and says, it says that the rate that's set will be for a minimum two-year period. For the purpose of giving the, the licensees some, some expectation about what the future holds in terms of, of city costs. And so...
So whatever we decide has to be for two years?
Well, what my, my, I think that if, if you were to raise the rate significantly in year number two, that would be inconsistent with our, with our ordinance. It was supposed to give some stability for a two-year period. I think if you, if you started out at these rates, and a year from now, we're hearing that these are onerous and unaffordable, and they're gonna leave and, or whatever the factors are, if we decide that we want to lower them, I believe we would have the ability to lower rates in year number two, notwithstanding the fact that our ordinance said the rates are going to be for a two-year period.
You know what, I'm gonna let you speak, but come up here. Can I get something? Sir? Thank you.
Again, Mark Herbert. I hear what's being said, and it seems as if there's a certain amount of consistency in the thinking, I think it'd be the easiest way to say it, because no one here needs to be insulted. The tax rates as they are, are already onerous. And I believe what I'm hearing said by these manufacturers who, from the figures I've heard thrown around in the city chambers here tonight, who have invested upwards of $20 million just in equipment and build-out so far, intending to buy tens of millions of dollars more equipment in order to provide for the existing tax base and their existing regulations. If the city were to impose a more onerous, meaning anything above 2% in taxation, you're going to see disinvestment, you're going to see disenfranchisement, and you're going to see a complete lack of revenue because you're going to kill a nascent industry. Again, these, this cannabis industry has not allowed the tax breaks like the wineries are, to suck water from the creek and to miss themselves and, and write labor off and all of these expenditures. It's already a heavily impacted industry, and it's nascent. It's going from a culture where two years ago I went to jail, but now you want 40% of my revenue. And I find that onerous. Anyone in any industry would find that onerous. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I understand the logic in that argument, but I have to also think about the fact that two years ago, we weren't spending tax dollars as a city to enforce or create an ordinance. And having cannabis in our community has, has cost the city a significant amount of money. This, a lot of staff time that could have been used for other things has, has been used for cannabis. And so we need to make sure that, that we're taxing to, at minimum, cover our costs. And, and I'm talking about direct costs. Obviously, staff time is more of a direct cost. There are lots of other costs here in our community, whether it's our law enforcement or our fire department, loss of other businesses to our community, those sorts of things, so it's, it's hard trying to figure out the right tax rate, especially when none of us are experts.
I agree with that, but I also think that, you know, cannabis has been in our county for decades, and a lot of money came through our county from cannabis even when it wasn't regulated and even when it wasn't taxed. I have a bookstore on Main Street, and I benefited directly from cannabis money. I know that I did. And, you know, I just, I just, I think it's important that we weigh, yes, we have to make sure the city is protected and that we are not, that this isn't costing us, but it's always cost something, but it's also always brought something. So we, we're trying to find that balance, and it's, it's difficult.
You know... Yeah, if you're gonna speak, I would have you come up here.
I think if we do a high excise tax, we're gonna inhibit most of these companies from investing in our community, which is gonna take away the opportunity for lots of employment for stuff. There's a lot of professionals that are being hired in the industry and bought, brought to the region to complete these tasks. I mean, even just her profession, every single one of these guys have a lawyer, they charge them $600 an hour or more. They're doing a lot to stay in compliance. And we've gathered a lot of money off of all of these people signing up to do business in town. They probably pay the fire department for their services when they show up.
No, they didn't.
They didn't. Well, I know often, I know like often, like if I, if I had too many calls, then, you know, then we're asked to pay the fire department a fee or so, or such. But a lot of these businesses are paying a lot of licensing fees. You said, what, it's an average of $279,000?
That's to cover our direct costs with processing that, not ongoing costs.
Understandably. But these people renew on a, on an annual basis, do they not?
It's like 20.
I don't know, I just wanted to say that I think the taxes should be low, encourage more business, and you'll have lots of employment. Plenty of people are deciding to live here and invest in the community, and plenty of people are going around and spending money in our shops.
Actually...
So, but, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me up here. To speak on that, just to be clear, the fire department doesn't charge for any of our services in town. We do, we do have a special tax that we fund ourselves on. But I'll have to tell you that the, as a fire chief slash fire marshal, the cannabis industry moving in here, taking a non-biased standpoint, has cost me 100% of my time, 80% of my time. Our call volumes go up, but the amount of money we bring in does not go up. I haven't seen a donation from the cannabis industry in any way. We don't get any dollars from anybody that's in this room off to the side. We still provide the same service even though our call volumes have gone through the roof. The last time that this community's had a tax increase to support the fire department, other than Measure J, directly related to capital improvement with the fire station, but for general budget money, was in 2003. Okay, we still run on the same money, we budget off the same money that we made in 2003, and we're just gonna make it work. No, the cannabis industry has not benefited the fire department in any way in this community. Where we get, our benefits come from, I'm gonna use a company, a good local company like Spare Time. They donate heavily to our fundraisers. They, they produce things for us. I'm counting on Measure I money to help us push through. We're a volunteer fire department. Just so you folks know that are in, here in the, in the crowd, I, I don't work for the city of Willets. We're a fire protection district that provides fire service to the city. Okay, I don't get any of the city's money either. So our working staff, our labor force is built on volunteering for the community. And when more business come in, it affects us. If it's legitimate business, great, it still affects what we do. Anything traveling, 72% of our calls are vehicle accidents. If more stuff's traveling up and down our highways, we get more calls. So I just want to be really clear that the industry has not benefited, has not had a benefit to us fiscally. Do we charge for plan checks? Yes, that's cost recovery, and it's miniscule compared to what you paid for a permit fee at the city of Willets. If you have a, if you have a fire protection sprinkler system in your facility, you know, you get charged five cents a square foot for that plan check. I don't see any more money after that, once that's put in. So to be clear, the fire department hasn't seen a dollar from the cannabis industry. And I just want to make sure that we understand that.
And, and, I just want to say one thing right now, but...
I'm gonna ask you a question. How many calls have you received to put out and deal with any issues that you think that may affect your facilities? So far? No. Thank you. You know what, I would like to address that, though. Would you like to know how many hours I spent going to cannabis?
So, how much money would be coming back to you after this?
It's not a windfall, Kevin. I, I don't think it's a lot. But quite honestly, in our department, in, in 2019, $10,000 is, is a boon to what we do. You know, anything that supports our function is worthwhile. Do I think that we're gonna see a bunch of money? No. And I don't, I don't expect to see a bunch of money. I expect to see a percentage of whatever Measure I produces and we negotiate with the city of Willets. But we'll take anything. But more or less, I just want to make it clear that we, we haven't benefited so far. You, you can't count plan check money and, and that sort of thing, because that's, that's just recovering costs for my service.
And the cannabis industry hasn't benefited from the white market either. I appreciate you bringing this up, because I, I don't...
We're not even aware of it. Folks, 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 okay. Thank you.
Sorry to take you...
No, 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 but I, I guess what I wanted to point out, I know I had this conversation with somebody, I know I had it with Kevin, that my hope was that as your businesses came in, were licensed, became legit, one of the things we look at in a small town, things like supporting fundraisers, supporting the schools, being good corporate citizens like some of the other businesses that are still in business, et cetera, you might find the PR you'll get from that goes a long way. And so I just kind of throw that as an aside, that we're not discussing that today, but, and it's my hope, and it's my hope that we, we have a, an ad hoc committee to meet with the fire department to discuss their needs and obviously how we look at this, and that's a separate issue. But it is something we're aware of because things have changed. In the old days, it was the Willets Fire Department, then they became a district. And so we are not really directly supporting them, I guess, and sometimes we indirectly support them, but we're not directly supporting the fire department. And their costs have gone up, prevention issues have been an issue. So whether it's checking your sprinkler systems, and there's some new requirements that have come onto the fire department, they've made us aware that basically the state said, here you go, you gotta do all this extra stuff. And some of that's gonna include you folks. And irregardless of whether you were cannabis or whether you were a school or whether you were a bookstore, you're, you're gonna, they're gonna interface with you more now. So I kind of wanted to throw that out there, that... So in my intent with an excise tax, again, I, I don't want to be burdensome, nobody wants to pay more taxes, but those are those services that we're hoping to, to help fund. Because I gotta tell you, there's, half the room today was probably ready to say, don't vote for Jerry next time because I have been for this. And, and that's fine. I, I also look at the big picture. I'm not looking at giant dollar signs that I'm gonna basically, you know, sacrifice you folks for that. I, I think we all have to pay our fair share. And that's what I'm looking at, so. Sabrina, do you have something?
How many hours?
Hundreds. When you're talking about the, the development of the ordinance, just to start, when there wasn't a fund to dip out of to begin with for us to charge to, it's just time we spent out of, out of our, out of our own time. There's hundreds of hours. The, the time spent on the phone, I email back and forth with people in this room all day long, every day, to...
Chris, can I ask a follow-up question, Sabrina? But I know that when we were chatting before, you had made it clear that you were interested in some of this Measure I money down the road, for obvious reasons, that you wanted to recover these costs, not just entire costs, but ongoing issues. And I, I assume this, our, your cooperation with us was kind of like an investment in the future.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're team players, we, you know, we have to, we work with the city hand in hand. I'm not trying to say that we don't. But I, I just wanted to be clear here how we get our money and, and that it, you know, that there is a huge burden to us for, especially on fire prevention services. I'd love to be able to hire a fire marshal. And our office is at 1575 Dr. Road. If anybody would like to come and talk to me down there every day about your facility or Kevin. So, anyway.
I just want to throw one thing out, Chris, and maybe you'll post, that I am interested in, I know what Stephanie had talked about, that I kind of feel like if you're doing business within Willets, I don't want a triple tax or whatever, again, but if you're shipping stuff somewhere else, sorry, you gotta, you're using our roads, you're using our fire department, you're putting a burden on our services, so I kind of see that distinction, but that's...
I just wanted to say that I understand your concerns, and, and I, I could advocate for lower taxes on bookstores, if I could advocate for restriction on Amazon delivering into my community, I would be right there yelling, you know, loudly at every city council and every county supervisor board meeting that I could go to. But legalization was pushed in order to take the burden off of you guys, off of the end user, off of the industry, right? You weren't going to be harassed any longer, you could be able to come out to the open and be proud of the jobs that you do and offer jobs to the community. It's hurt, legalization hurts. We know in our community, people are hurting from legalization, and the bottom has dropped out of the market, people who made their land payments no longer can, people are leaving. We get it. We're receptive to that. You've come and you've invested in our community, we want you to be here, we want you to succeed. But everybody's gotta pay a little bit, right? And I feel like these rates that are recommended have been thought over, and we're doing, we're working hard to make it work. So, yeah, you'd like it lower, we'd like it higher. Let's meet in the middle, right? And this seems like a good compromise, in my book.
Is there a way, Stephanie, if you went with the recommended starting rates, but we kept in mind the vertical integration, that we can make this work within the...
Well, I, a couple of things I wanted to say. We're here to set initial rates, and I think what Jim said was really interesting to me because we were, we were very worried about that two-year being locked in. The intention of the ordinance, as Jim said, was so that folks in the industry wouldn't think that we were going to jump up the rates. If we start somewhere but realize it's not really working, we can go down. He said so. We can, we can drop it down if it's not quite working, which, which means to me that we have some flexibility. In terms of working out some sort of a tax break for a vertical integration, that's something that's gonna take a little bit more time, but I don't want it to sort of not be passing a tax while we figure that part of it out. I think that this is gonna be a work in progress, it has to be. No one has figured this out. I mean, we've been talking to everyone, no one has figured this out. I do think... I do think that we've started out with, I mean, we dropped from $7 to $250, $250 a square foot for cultivation. That seems really, from what other people are doing, really pretty good. The 4%, I know people were complaining, oh my God, 4%. That's for storefront retail. That is considerably less than the sales tax. This is not subject to sales tax, so that's a huge break. If it's regular sales tax, it would be, you know, practically double that. So the delivery taxes and the storefront retail, I don't figure out of line at all. In terms of what's in between, the testing, distribution, manufacturing, and packaging, I guess I would really like to hear from both Dusty and our attorney to see if there's any flexibility that you would recommend in those rates, just from what I'm seeing from the comparisons, and if that's, if that's something that you would want to hear.
I would like to hear. But I also wanted to ask you, on the storefront dispensary idea, which we haven't got any experience with yet, that the 4% excise tax would be for medical, they're not going to be paying any sales tax.
Right.
But if they, if we now...
It would not apply, and we would make it so it would not apply to adult use.
So the, but that would mean then that the city would be only getting 1% of that pipe or whatever, you know? We only get a piece of the sales tax. The rest of it goes to the state. So would, you know, so we need to work out the implication of that.
If adult use is approved, then there would need to be some sort of adjustment in the tax limits to account for that. Those jurisdictions would just apply the 4% or have applied the excise tax to medicinal or...
Okay, okay. That was my concern, but I would...
You know, then maybe that's...
Okay, that's a good one. And I would like to go, yeah, I agree with your request for some clarification from Dusty and others.
I mean, based on what you've heard and maybe...
Well, you know...
I mean, these don't, 2%, and people said, hey, 2% is fair, and that's sort of what I see as 1% and 2%.
Yeah. I mean, specifically to distribution and manufacturing, I mean, you can see that you're in the range of other jurisdictions. I think a concern that I have, after speaking mainly to industry and then also recognizing that some jurisdictions have chosen, yeah, we're going to tax cultivation, yeah, we're going to tax retail, but we're not going to tax at all distribution and manufacturing. That's kind of interesting to me, you know? But for me to tell you, yeah, you know, it might be more appropriate for us to look at lowering your rate and put distribution at 1% and put manufacturing at 2% or something. I think if, kind of stepping out of my usual way I play my job as staff for you, and I'll just kind of be honest. Well, I'm not going to be honest, but I would, I'd limit personal opinion a little bit, yeah. Don't quote that. I would be concerned, I would be talking to the distributors and manufacturers and going, look, is there going to be a big difference in your business model if you're at 1% or, say, 2%? If we put you at 1%, does that mean you're still going to participate in purchasing large quantities of cannabis in our community and then turning it into a profit? Or if we set you at, you know, or if we set you at 2%, you're no longer going to do that and you're just going to be more of a service industry where you're just transporting something from one particular location to another? And the same with manufacturing? Because based on assuming that we got an honest answer from them, it might very well be that you're going to collect a lot more money at a 1% tax rate than you would at 2% tax rate, and the same for manufacturing. So, but without me understanding that, I can't tell you whether that's right or you should consider lowering it a little bit, okay? What I can say is that what you have in front of you is pretty consistent and is in the range of what other jurisdictions have established. And, you know, again, there's always an opportunity to change them, so it's not like you're set in stone, but thanks, Stephanie, for asking.
It's what they pay for.
I guess at this point, though, Kevin.
Well, I, again, this is sort of stabbing in the dark here without a lot of knowledge, but I kind of like the capping the percent on these, other than the retail, other than dispensaries, capping it at the 2%. So I would like to move that we recommend that the rates be as staff recommended, except the 2.5s, change to 2.0, which would be, so it'd be the 250 per square foot cultivation, 0 for square foot per nursery, 2% distribution, 2% manufacturing, 2% packaging, processing, 5% for storefront retail, and I think 4% for delivery is reasonable, too.
That's my motion. That would be for two years?
Yeah. And we can always lower them from that, but we can't raise them from there.
So can I repeat, so you would keep the 250 per square foot for cultivation?
Yeah.
But drop the 2.5s to 2.0 and raise the 4% to 5%?
No, just leave those, leave it at 4%.
Okay, you had said 5%, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the 250 for cultivation would stay the same as...
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything's the same except the 2, manufacturing and packaging would go down to 2%.
Do I have a second for that?
I don't see any reason for it when I'm comparing rates to other communities. I just don't see the logic in why we need to drop it to 2% when competing counties are, you know, at 2 and 1/2, 4 and 1/2, and 3%.
But some of them have no, some of them are zero.
Well, when I look at the no tax, it's actually, if you go all the way over to the city, it has an, some of them have explanations as to, for example, Eureka has no tax because they don't have a, the elimination of a cannabis tax was discussed, but there hasn't been an ordinance, so there's the reason they have no tax, so...
Okay, for lack of a second, then, now do I have another motion?
A move that we accept staff report.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, real quick. In the resolution that you're considering now, it includes the tax rates as recommended by staff, but it also has an initial term of three years. And what I heard is you want that to be two years. So the way the resolution is written, you might want to change that.
That would be my second, thank you.
So you have an idea to make for the motion. You're okay with making it two?
Yes.
Okay. No, you're good?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public want to add one last shot? You guys come up here.
When I hear these figures being quoted from outside of this county, look at population. Look at pop, Santa Rosa has three times the population of Mendocino County, just Santa Rosa. Lake County has greater population. They have a greater tax base. This tax base on this industry, which is, again, a nascent industry, you have the room to move further at another point in time, but you're not going to have the room to attract more companies or to ask people to make more investment here. Thank you.
At this point, I will call for the vote.
Yes. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Red Regan?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes. All right, folks, thank you. And again, I've been looking for good corporate citizens and a good track record. I don't want to give the naysayers any reason to say we made a mistake.
Thank you for asking.
All right. So at this point, we have...
Take conversation out of the room.
Have to ask to go longer, it's 10 o'clock.
Yes, you have to ask, because we have to get a vote together.
So folks, at this point, a box does...
I'm not going to go without my rate, so I can tell you that.
Hey, folks, can we go outside? Ladies and gentlemen, can we go outside so we can finish our business meeting? Back of the room, take it outside if you're, we still have a meeting to finish.
Yes.
So at this point, we reach the magic hour. It's 10 o'clock and a minute, so per policy, we need a vote to say we will continue.
I move that we continue the meeting.
Let's get this puppy done.
I move that we continue the meeting for as much as...
Seconded by Greta. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. No enactment of ordinances and item five, consent calendar. Kathy, did we...
The minutes of January 23rd.
Okay.
For those going to come back to us later?
Yeah, next, the next meeting. I finished them, but I will wait until...
So do we have anything, anybody want to pull anything?
I'd like to pull number B, please.
Okay. And anybody else want to pull anything?
I move approval of items A and C, the removal of January 23rd.
All those in favor? Actually, you know what? It was a money issue there, so let's do a roll call. Yeah.
Who's the second?
No, he wanted to pull...
I wanted to, I wanted to pull, I wanted a roll call vote for this one, this one I wanted.
Okay, but do we have a second on A and C?
Yeah, I think it was imagined...
I made the motion and who seconded it?
I can't remember, but I will.
All right. I heard it over here.
So who seconded it?
The branch.
Greta.
Okay.
Greta wants it, she's...
All right, it's a tie.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Red Regan?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stankey?
Yes.
Okay. All right, now item B, adopt a resolution approving a raise in the allotment given to council members.
Just for consistency, I have to say no.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to mention, she's in the room, but Willets News, I think, had that number, the impact, wrong. She took it from the staff report when it was going to be a different, it was going to be 300. So, but, you know...
I recalculated, so I'll call her.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Again, it's a money issue, so do I have a motion?
I shall move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, move and second it. Now for a roll call.
Councilmember Connie?
No.
Red Regan?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stankey?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Information reports right to appeal persons who are dissatisfied that the decisions of the city council may have a right to review of that decision by court. The city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, a time within which the decisions city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. All right. And eight commissions, agencies, and authorities. I just mentioned, I just got back on...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got put back on LAPCO, so they meet next week, and Liga Cities meets in Yucay tomorrow, so...
So this is where I report on both EDFC and SWA?
Isn't that number 11?
Yeah, that's what, council.
Oh, no, that, yeah, I get confused between these two things.
We have 10 to go yet.
Yeah, so, okay.
City manager.
City manager.
So those things come, I'm sorry, can we just clarify?
Those will come under 11.
Okay.
What is it?
Eight is if you said it as the planning commission.
Yeah, that's right. I got it wrong, so, sorry.
I'll add that in there so we know.
Then I got it wrong? Yeah, thank you.
No, not that.
Okay, well, I'm tired, so...
I'll add in what it is.
It does say it in the sentence, it just doesn't...
Yeah. Okay, so city manager.
Okay. Just a couple of quick things. I noticed there's been a lot of interest in pavement. Wanted the public to know that we're going to do a state of the pavement report, first council meeting in March, if my, if our engineering staff stops having the flu. It might have to get put off if the flu keeps continuing, but so far we are preparing to come to talk to everybody about potholes, what we're planning on roads, and to reprioritize road repair. I just wanted the public to know that, because I want people to come out for it. That's all.
And you mentioned in our meeting PG&E issues.
Oh, so, yes, and the other meeting that we're planning, likely the second meeting in March or the first meeting in April, is we want to have a public meeting regarding PG&E outages, the planned outages that they were wanting to do for two and three days at a time during fire season. I think our public really needs to be prepared for that. I think PG&E, we deserve a presentation by PG&E. We are trying to get that. We have been in contact with Senator Maguire's office, who's very interested in making PG&E come and help us with that, those difficult decisions. We are also shopping for generators. So we are going to, we are planning something. We also are talking to both the school district and other entities to get together on this issue because power outages for two and three days at a time are really difficult.
I forgot to mention the hospital.
And the hospital, yes, the hospital and the school district. We are, we have, we want to get together and talk about coordinating communications and just dealing with a three-day power outage. I mean, it's just critical for us. That's all.
Okay, we're now at item 10, discussion, possible action, submit a grant application to the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection Urban and Community Forestry Program Grant. It's Dusty, thank you.
Let's see, okay, yeah. So the council's familiar with this grant application. This is a grant that we submitted to CAL FIRE to fund an urban forestry management plan at a cost of $75,000, the cost to buy and plant 50 street trees, so this would mainly be along Main Street or Commercial Street, as well as 115 additional street trees that would be planted at schools as part of our public works projects, et cetera, some additional funds for some educational outreach and supplies. The reason this is coming before you is because we were successful in getting invited to the final round of consideration. So a lot of jurisdictions did not make it this far. And so, but we need a resolution from you guys to move forward. So we're working on a deadline of March 15 to submit quite a bit more information to CAL FIRE to remain competitive for the grant. But we do need the resolution that's been prepared to be approved by the council so that we can move forward with that grant request.
And I just want to make correction. You said it was a $75,000 grant. It's actually about a $250,000 grant.
$75,000 for the urban forestry management, $125,000 for trees. So, yeah, overall, it's $256,525.
Well, this one's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion for the public comment?
Oh, yeah, you better take public comment.
From the public, want to speak to this potential free money?
All right.
All right, now we're good.
I'll make a motion to submit a grant application to the California Department of Forestry for the purpose of the grant specified.
And I will second that motion.
Right. Motion seconded for the discussion. Last chance for the public. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item B, discussion and possible action to request for public convenience and necessity determination for a type 64 on sale general license to nonprofit theater company at 37 West Band Lane, Willets Community Theater. Do you guys know about this process?
Well, I will make a motion to...
Well, at this point, I just wanted, are law enforcement person here any opposition from law enforcement? I talked to the chief and he said no, but I figured I'd...
And then you also have Christina, who's been patiently waiting back there. She's the managing director for the theater. She may have...
Christina, did you want to say anything? Did you want to come up here if you want to say something?
I don't think she does. Do you need a show?
I'll just add that these licenses, things changed, and now they allow them, you can I'll just add that these licenses, things changed, and now they allow them, you can go to movie theaters and get wine, and it's become pretty commonplace. In the time I was chief of police, you guys got the temporary ones, the nonprofit ones, I never had an issue, so I don't suspect that there would be an issue. You're under all the same regulations that any other licensee would have, so if you mess up, you'll lose your license, so. So at this point, unless somebody from the public wants to speak, I will. If anybody up here wants to.
I was just gonna make a motion that we approve the finding of public convenience and necessity for this, especially the convenience, for the license for Willett's Community Theater, which I think is a great boon to the community, I love our theater, and I love going to the theater, and it would be a great thing to have, to be able to have them, so what year?
And again, education was, the reason we have to do, have this finding of this is because there's an oversaturation technically of alcohol.
But it, this is a specialized.
But we're basically saying this is something we want to see, so. All right, do I have a second?
Yes. I second.
Any further discussion?
Have we had any objections from the neighbors, just for?
No.
In the time I was chief, nobody ever complained.
I didn't think so, I just asked the question.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Now, item C, creating important, sorry, June.
Thank you, Christina, for bearing.
Isn't it interesting how these meetings? Very interesting.
Power points, or you guys a good way, what you have in the hand now? I can't read there, so I'm just reading through my PowerPoint.
Can you see okay, say?
Can you see okay, anybody? This is slides, it's a recap for the general fund revenues. So far, we are, it's a forty percent of the total budget as of January thirty-one. Our biggest revenue is sales tax, which right now is a forty percent, because we only collect from like July until November of two thousand eighteen. So compared with last year, from July to November two thousand seventeen, we collected like six-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars. But we were only down seventy-two hundred dollars, which is one-point-one percent. The consultant we hired, Moonie Services, actually projected a two-point-six percent drop. So we're doing better, that's what I'm trying to say, better than projected. The whole rate, the whole reason for whole general fund revenue is a forty percent. One line item, I think the question is intergovernmental revenue, which should only hit fourteen percent of the budget. Because this, this one item really, also include the overhead allocation, which is five-hundred thousand dollars. Those are kinda like allocate the city staff time to different fund, and it only make once a year. So, that, I haven't made that journal entry yet. Another one is for the intergovernmental revenue, there a little bit for ninety-three thousand dollars, those are COP's grants, that's what we received. So that's the that line. Any questions for this one? All right, okay, now we talk about the expenditures. I've been there too long, can't talk anymore. The expenditure so far is a forty-five percent of the budget. The biggest one is the police protection and public safety, due to the staff turnover with the police departments, they generate a lot of overhead, overtime, so that's why it's fifty percent of the budget. It's a little bit over, because if you think about seven months, out of, for twelve months, it's about like a forty-six, no, about like fifty, a little bit over fifty percent. But not forty-six percent is the, is a little bit above. However, for public work department is a thirty-four percent, just that's because a lot of projects we haven't done. Also, we don't have a public work director, so we have salary savings from that line item.
Quick question? In terms of the police department, are we still, are we still using a large number of overtime hours?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we lost an officer, so. We need to keep him.
Yeah. The one.
So, the police department has been short-staffed for years, causing us to comp all our overtime. Comp all our overtime, vacation, we've never been able to take. We had bodies this year, everyone took vacation. That's why the overtime is eating up so much already.
Just thanks for looking.
The fires don't help, so we worked a lot of overtime in the fires, we won't see that money till we get reimbursed by FEMA, even a year or so down the road, whatever the case, so. Everyone's always maxed out on comp time because of the staffing, staff, we will send people to trainings that are required by state mandates, as well as vacations that no one's been able to take in years. And we've realized we're a black hole.
But that was then, we were fully staffed for a period of time while that was going on.
And we're currently losing two officers.
And now we're losing some officers again.
Yeah.
So we'll have overtime because we're having to fill those.
We've lost or we will be losing.
But we're also recruiting.
We are recruiting, and we have a reserve, we're in the process of backgrounds with, so.
We've lost or we will be losing?
We will be, in about a month, we'll lose two.
Other expenditures, some of you might have a question, because that's the biggest percentage in the general fund expenditures, which is eighty-six percent spent so far. These are mainly component is community, community services category, which is, we budgeted like a forty thousand for Chamber of Commerce, and as of today, we are to give Chamber of Commerce for thirty-nine thousand. And also, we budgeted like a senior center for thousand dollars, we have given them seven-hundred-and-fifty already. So those small line of thousand dollars for the county's museum, five hundred for county's library, and then Willett's Community Services, thousand dollars. And also, our daily bread with only seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, so out of the thousand-dollar budget. So we did contribute to community, that's the other expenditures as of today.
June, is some of this also that we increased some, we added staff and increased, I thought we did some salary adjustments too?
Yes, yes, the expenditure started reflecting the two percent increase, the cola, yeah. All right, so the next one. This slide mainly talking about the changes for the general fund. We're gonna recognize the revenue from the donation, the fifty-two hundred dollars for, what's that music? Moving the park, so we just spent on the program. So far, we spent almost five thousand dollars out of a fifty-one-hundred-dollar donation. Yeah, so we recognize the revenue and then we allocate that revenue to the expenditure accounts?
She misunderstood, no, the donations fully covered the expenditures for the.
Right. Right, so far we spent like close to five thousand dollars, yeah, from the donation. And then also.
Can I, just to clarify that, so you're just accounting for the outgoing is equal to the donations that you receive, and that wasn't in the budget, so you're just showing it, right?
Right.
It's a zero, okay.
Yeah, it wasn't budgeted because we don't know, yeah.
Yeah, just.
Yeah. And then also planning departments, they, we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars initially for the purchasing of vehicle for code enforcement. And then now, twenty-five thousand is not enough to buy a vehicle, plus necessary equipment, so we allocate another fifteen thousand dollars for the, for the same purposes. And then, there's operating transfer out of seventeen thousand five hundred. This is because there's some testing need to be done for landfill closure projects. In landfill right now, we haven't, you know, collected money from the county yet, so it's solely general fund funded. And then later on, hope by end of this fiscal year, we'll staff will have time to go through invoices and then hope that those we found it. Public work department, engineer department, twenty thousand, just because they planning to spend forty thousand to buy a truck. It was budgeted in the eighteen-nineteen budget, and now they're saying, you know, we're not gonna buy this, just leave twenty thousand in there, so just in case something broken down with the existing vehicles. So we take down the twenty thousand dollars. And then also, the thousand dollars, just because, same thing for the engineer division, because they write this line, budget adjustment, they think they gonna order more office expenditures and then move from one line to the other, so there's no really effect at the bottom line of that, thousand dollars ones. And another one is a big hit, is five thousand dollars, this is previously adopted by the city council, the RTS contract. And we, it's twenty-five thousand when we adopted, and when we adopted, when we adopted, is, we were saying it's all gonna come from general fund. But however, right now, which is still is working a lot on sewer building, and Brook Trail case, so eighty percent is gonna be allocated to sewer funds, because that's sewer related. And then twenty percent allocated to general fund. So that's the twenty percent of the twenty-five thousand, that's five thousand. That's all the changes for the general fund. Question?
So I told them that cost.
It's a seventeen thousand five hundred for general fund out, yeah.
Better than I was expecting.
Now we talk about special revenue. Which one? Just ask the general, any questions? This is the other front, like enterprise special revenue and the trust funds. I think the slice was a little bit off. It's a little bit off, but, yeah. Let's talk about my staff reports. Transportation funds, transportation funds is mainly a component, it's the traffic fines, and gas tax, federal funding, and other revenues. Traffic fines right now, we only on the twenty percent, we budgeted, not that high, like three thousand. So far, we collected five-hundred-and-ninety. The budget was kind of like right on target, really conservative, because the previous two years, we were exceeding three thousand dollars. It is, we don't really know how many fines, you know, we're gonna collect, in that case, how many tickets police gonna issue, that's where that is. The gas tax, however, is ninety-seven thousand dollars, so far we received a ninety-five, it's kind of more than what we expected from the gas tax revenue. And the federal funds, this is a five-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollar budget, which includes three components. One is a local street and roads, which is two-hundred thousand dollars, and then SB one, eighty-one thousand dollars. And the remaining will be D one, D one funds, which is called the regional surface transportation program from the county, it's regional money. So the two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars, what we receive, is not on this slice, it's on the staff report in here. The two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars received on this line item is, we get reimbursed from the D one funds, which for city purchase sweepers. To, but those money we got, two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars, which is just, it's kind of fifty percent of what we budgeted.
I just wondered why, was there no federal fund or extremely little in the previous two fiscal years? How come we've got this windfall?
It's not like a no federal funds, D one money, like the regional surface transportation program, it's kind of, if you spend, it get reimbursed. And then this, two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars actually is from fiscal year eleven, twelve, twelve or thirteen, it's from three fiscal years before. We still haven't spent the seventeen-eighteen yet, no, this is just up to fifteen-sixteen, so it's, it's cumulative.
Delayed, delayed.
The money's therefore available for spend, but you only, we only can get one way, ask for reimbursement, we have something done.
And so what we're, you're actually looking at is the street sweeper?
Yeah.
So, all the money was sort of piling up, this year we bought a street sweeper, so we asked for the money, that's where we have the money at. Okay.
So overall, this transportation funds, we were fifty percent on the target. On the expenditure side, we also, overall, if you look the staff report now, the slides, it's about forty-nine percent on the, from budgeted expenditures so far. Same thing, traffic safety, operations, police, which is comes to ninety-one percent, that's because the overtime and then all the police started expand, that's what it is. Next time, I'm gonna talk about the sales tax transportation funds, which is the one-half percent, a half percent, two-point-five percent. Those are, as of today, is that we collected three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, as of today, it means January thirty-first, which represents like fifty percent of what we total budgeted. So, based on the current trend and compare with eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars received for seventeen-eighteen, so we're right on the target on this one, on the, on transportation funds, the half percent sales tax, yeah. Any question for this half percent sales tax funds? Next we talk about the airport enterprise funds. Airport enterprise funds, the revenue mainly is come from the hangars rental, and also FAA grants, and also allotment from the state for hundred thousand dollars, so those are the mainly funding source, and a few sales, of course. So far, actually rental income is, we budgeted sixty-five thousand, but we collected as of January thirty-first, it's a seventy-five thousand. So that's a hundred, hundred-and-sixteen percent over. I guess people just pay their annual, rentalions, do they pay monthly? So they have a lot of credits on it, they're, they're a little bit delunct on the lease, it's about three thousand dollars for people delunct on their, the rental payment, but comparing, you know, sixty-five thousand income and the credits on account, so we're in good shape on that funds. Yeah, any questions on the airport? I'm gonna go on sewer enterprise. Sewer enterprise fund revenue right now, we're fifty-two-point-five percent of the budget collected by January thirty-first, so it's right on target. Actually, we projected the sewer revenue gonna be twenty percent of, above the budget on this case. Because at this point in time, the January thirty-first report printed, we have found we missed some like revenues for collected, because our accounting system wasn't correctly, you know, set up, it would be a long-term problem, so. But, it's gonna be, at the end, we project twenty percent increase above the budget. Of course, the.
Interesting.
Question?
I just, worth noting that twenty percent is, that should impact future decision-making on rate increases?
I think we have some improvements.
More information.
One of the problems we experienced yesterday was that quite a bit of saturation, and there are some improvements we need to make to our sewer system to ensure that we have a clean rate system, so we'll be looking at that as well.
You'll give us more information later.
The expenditure side, actually, the sewer funds is pretty minimal right now, and it's about like a thirty-seven percent. A lot of them is because of stuff that you can help out here a little bit, the capital improvement projects and where the status is, how much we haven't spent. And then, so that's all depend on the project, how the project goes.
Yeah, we were gonna, we still have a building to build, there's gonna be, and so some capital improvements to be done. I think that's why we're low there.
I know this is budget, but we still need to meet with Brook Trails.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I could give you a little brief update on that real quick. We, Brook Trails and the city jointly engaged an accounting firm in Santa Rosa to review the city's flow records and operational expenses from the time of our settlement in Ju, July one, twenty fifteen, for three years forward, for the purpose of setting our, our future rates commencing this coming July one. Presently, Brook Trails pays twenty-two thousand dollars a month, rip share of operational expenses. And that, that accounting firm is reviewing information the city has provided, but they've let us know that they want additional information that we need to get to them, and the bottom line is it's taking longer than we had thought. Such that Chris Neary and I met with their new manager, Tamara, and Stephanie recently, we talked about a possible extension of the twenty-two thousand dollar a month basis. And so, that's something that we, I expect, or I'm gonna bring back to you in the future, that if it turns out that we don't have sufficient information to negotiate a new rate by our deadline of July one, then we may wish to recommend extending that for a brief period, three months maybe, or whatever seems reasonable. Because if Brook Trails, if it turns out that. Uh, because Brook, if Brook Trails, if it turns out that, um, the accounting firm is, recommends an increase in Brook Trails rate, they're going to need to do a two-eighteen rate process, which will take up to sixty days and do other things. So unfortunately, this process is taking a little longer, uh, but we're working on it and and city staff is working to comply with what the auditors need, yes.
If it turns out that the rate needs to be lowered, would that be, uh, would that be ex post acto, I mean, would that apply?
Yeah, let's say, let's say, uh.
Or as of July first?
Right, if it needs to be lower, they wouldn't have to do it the two-eighteen process. I think they only need to do that if they have to go to their voters and, uh, and request an increase.
So the twenty-two thousand a month, uh, is is firm until, um, July first?
Correct.
After July first, if we're just on an interim basis continuing to charge that, it could be that that's either too low or too high, but we won't know that. So if it's too low, they'll have to go through the two-eighteen process. If it's too high, we'll have to reimburse them something, right?
Well, I think what we, if I understand you correctly.
It's the name of the right.
I think we're, yeah, I think what we're talking about is if, if, if we need to extend the two eight, the twenty-two thousand, say, for three months, uh, and then finally, we negotiate a new rate, so forth, and that rate, we, and that rate, say, is to be increased to twenty-three thousand, are, we would, my, my understanding is we would not, um, seek any adjustment for the retroactively for those three months, but it just would be three months of twenty-two thousand.
Just kicking the time forward.
And then, yeah, and then it'll be, but that's something we'll bring back to you.
Yeah, I just, I'm saying if it's the other way around, the accountant said it should have been twenty thousand instead of twenty-two thousand.
Oh, you mean for the, for the past three years?
No, for the three months after July first.
Oh. Um, I think it would work the same way. I think both parties would stick to twenty-two thousand for that three-month period without right of offset or contribution.
Okay.
Maybe gambling, they could get a deal or.
Yeah, but then have it just continue and.
But I'll bring this back when we know more.
No retroactive.
Sorry, June, just a figure of relevant. Oh, it's all right. I'm good. Continue. Yeah. All right, so the last one we're going to talk about is the, uh, the water enterprise fund. Water enterprise fund actually doing extremely well, um, by January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Uh, we right on seventy-eight percent of the budget already. Um, the water use, water usage, user chart, which is the normal water bill, we budgeted like two point six million dollars, we already collected one point eight six million dollars. So that's like a seventy percent. Also, we have a lot of, I guess, the business coming town doing the new, uh, the infrastructure, so we have a water hookup fee. And we, though, we didn't expecting when we do the budget to have twenty thousand that much, when we put like a forty-five hundred dollars for the water hookup fee, and then actually, we collected, um, twenty-nine thousand dollars. So this two line item, line item is, yeah, boosting to the seventy-eight percent.
What did that twenty-nine thousand, how would that affect the percentage? What would the rate, percentage rate have been?
It was budgeted forty-five hundred dollars, and then now we collect twenty-nine thousand. So that compared is the six, six hundred forty-five percent of the budget. So, you know, you rolled over the total, um, for the whole, overall, the water revenue, um, that we budgeted is a three point two million dollars. And so far, every single line, like, uh, the water usage penalties, hookup fees, backflows, and all of that, so altogether, we collect two point five million dollars out of three point two million. So it's seventy-eight percent if you calculate that way.
All right, and are we talking infrastructure on that account as well?
I, I think that we need to talk about that in the next budget period.
Yeah.
Because we, we, we need to look at.
Because we have had some complaints about some rates, and maybe there's some room there to, to look at that.
Uh, yeah, I think a budget time will be more prepared to sort of talk, to talk about it, um, what we need to do for infrastructure and what we need, because I know there were also, we need to do some adjustments in our allocations. I think June was kind of talking to me about some allocation adjustments that needed to happen, um, that we were not capturing. So I think a budget time will, it's coming up, we can have a discussion with them. I, I know with the sewer plant, we have some infrastructure needs, some absolute infrastructure needs, water, I'm not so sure.
Water on the list of the budget, example, like a water tank and the main street, the, the pipeline and the watershed, and those are like something is already we budgeted. That's all the infrastructure, so you got to have the money in the reserve first, and then you can do the whole projects in that case.
Yeah, actually, I'm wondering now, you know, we received approximately five hundred thousand dollars in unexpected, the revenue from the trees. And so actually, what she's seeing is probably that.
Yeah.
Is that the money? Is that the increase?
Because she was not here when we did that.
Right, I didn't.
So I was like, wow, we're really off the mark.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that that's with the watershed, um, reclamation project. And Scott is shaking his head.
Yeah, that's one of them, miscellaneous revenue, yeah, five hundred eighty-one thousand.
Yeah, that's it.
Five hundred eighty-one thousand we received, yeah.
Have you paid for the water line and the bridge yet?
We have not paid for that yet? Okay.
Of course not.
It was budgeted, but yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, yeah, so the expenditure side is mainly on like how much a project you have done. Um, the project I mentioned earlier, by January thirty-four, there's no expenditure so far. I'm pretty sure this bill is just going to float in and then, because they are doing the works, so we just haven't, we haven't paid the contract, or we haven't paid it yet. So that's the work. So overall, the changes for all these funds I just talked about, other than general fund, um, that's on this slice right here. Um, the first category is the payment reservation. It was budgeted in the, the, we were going to use the half percent sales tax, that was the budget in, uh, the eighteen nineteen adopted budget. And right now, recommended by the engineering, and we're going to use the gas S B one money to pay for that, so it's going to be a move to the two oh one funds, which is, uh, the gas tax funds. We're going to use gas tax to pay. So project's still there, which is changing the funding, how we fund it. Um, the second, the, the gray line in the middle, this is about, um, the, the revenue side for, as earlier I mentioned, that five hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, you wrote in one line item, um, they have a local street or roads and then D one money and S B one money. Uh, just for reporting purposes, for the state and the S B one, I'd like to have the S B one in separate fund, so it more clear how much we're collecting, how much we spend. So because every year, October one, we had to report to state with the status of the funds, how much we spent. So I don't like to roll over with other funds, so that's, that's why I separate that line out. Um, the local, local street, it was budgeted for two hundred thousand dollars, and then we reduced to one hundred thousand dollars for this fiscal year, because we were thinking maybe get another hundred thousand this next fiscal year. So that's all of that federal other, the negative, the two eighty-one. So one eighty-one is already allocated to, just switch the, the account numbers, and then really, the, the reduction for one hundred thousand is a local street and road, it was from two hundred to one hundred thousand. That's that, um, middle section. And then also, um, this, the, the next section, it's just the, the gas tax, uh, funds, going to fund the annual street striping and the brick side stabilization, those are going to be, um, funded by the S B one funds, that's the project, yeah. And I'm not sure about this, oh, yeah, this is, I noticed the, the negative forty thousand dollars, because it's combined with the brick side stabilization, which is that twenty-six thousand four five five, the second line item. So that product combined with that, for this fiscal year, it's only, we probably went to twenty-six thousand dollars, not forty. So that's reduced expenditures on that project. The lean field, that's the one, uh, we're going to borrow from general fund for seventeen thousand five hundred, because the taxing services we had to do, the lean field, that's like the general fund, this is the other side where the money going to go. And then the other contract I mentioned earlier, the R, R G S contract, eighty percent of twenty-five thousand dollars. And then the water utility, this is the, um, perpetual, uh, energy. We, we got, I expected the bill from perpetual energy right now, we're in, we're, we're going to pay the invoice under the protest, um, they already acknowledged that, so however, we didn't have that much of funding to pay, I think it was thirty-four thousand dollars. So we're going to use the fund balance of the water funds to, to pay for this invoice, that's the, I lost items. So overall, okay, any questions on this slice? All right, that'd be quick, last one. So overall, general fund balance as of, um, July one, two thousand eighteen, that's the one we budgeted, we project two point six million dollars, um, a beginning balance on the revenue and transfer in four point five million, expenditure transfer five point three million, and then projected general fund balance is one point eight million. That's the one we budgeted, adopted the eight, eighteen nineteen budget, which is thirty-five point two six percent of the, um, the reserve, general fund reserve. After we did all that revise, the sub, really, it's the seventeen thousand five hundred, and then we draw down a little bit, thirty-four point seven nine percent for the general fund reserve. Because the, we reduce the general fund balance of seventeen thousand five hundred to mainly just funding and build projects.
Do we have anything in negotiations that's going to be impacted by dropping under the thirty-five percent number?
Um, no, we have a council policy of staying thirty-five percent, but that's all it is. It's a policy, there's no law or anything. Um, you are thinking of, we have some of our pay raises were dependent on whether or not we had income, we, we stayed above a certain income.
Yeah.
But that was not general, that's good memory, um, that was not on our general fund reserve, that was whether we had a dramatic decrease in income, such as if our sales tax or other revenue dropped, uh, below a certain, but we're fine right now.
Okay.
And we, and that was a, that would have been a subject for renegotiation.
Yeah.
Not in any automatic.
And we're not very much under thirty-five, but I was just, I was thinking that it was connected to that.
No, it was, it wasn't, it wasn't that. Um, also, keep in mind that we did not budget anything for cannabis, for revenue, we did not account in this budget.
Measure I.
Pardon? Yeah, measure I, because we didn't know that it was going to pass, um, so there was no, there is no income budgeted for measure I for, for this fiscal year. And hopefully, we'll be able, be, because you passed this resolution, hopefully, we will be collecting taxes very soon. Soon as we can.
Any questions? Are we finished?
So I don't have any questions about this, but, um, I did want to just real quick get back to the, um, the half cent sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
So at the next meeting, or maybe even the meeting after, when we have our state of streets, um, I think the, um, so this tells us what we've collected this, this fiscal year. But I think it would be great for the public to know what actually sits, how much really is in our half cent sales tax fund. Um, and, and I know people in the public have been asking how historic we had that been used, so I don't know if that's information.
That's actually in that slice, the sales tax trans, uh, um, transportation funds, two oh two, the beginning balance, two point one million, and that was a budgeted, and the revenue in, revenue out, the projected is one point one million, is one point, it will be over one million. And after revise, what we did on the previous slice, the projected balance is going to be one point three million dollars, because some, remember, we moved on project, like the payment project from the, use the sales tax to pay to, to do and use the gas tax. So actually, the fund balance is going to increase to one sixty thousand dollars because of it. So we have more.
But you are absolutely right. In the state of payment report, part of that report is going to be our half cent sales tax. Yes, we put it aside, this is, these are the projects that came from it, and show how much is in it and what we do with it, to show folks that we are, we are very strict about what we use those funds for. It's not just put out in favor of salaries, it is absolutely allocated for specific payment projects. And that, that was the intention, one of the intentions of the, of the pay, of the state of the payment address was to explain just that issue, because I think folks don't realize, it is general fund, but it is also sort of a restricted general fund.
Special, special purpose.
It's a special purpose fund.
I think put some aside for the down count, is that taken into account, or is that money?
Uh, and I'm not sure if that's taken into account here, and I'm not sure that whether June actually knows how we do that.
I don't, uh, as, sir's so short, or so, I don't know, I, I won't get any, like, next five years capital improvement plan from the water sewer and from internet division yet, because those are, will align with our next, like, five years of capital improvement plan. So what we're going to do for this year, what we're going to do next year, what street we're going to do, uh, for payment next year, year after, all that, same thing, pipe replacement or that, I, I don't have that information. Yeah, that's, that's another topic other than this.
Yeah.
Yeah, five years.
We've been putting a little in the bank for the, for the streets, so.
Yeah. All right. All right, thank you.
Oh, we do have a, a resolution to pass.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I think what we're looking at is adopt a resolution to accept the proposed budget amendments included in the mid-year budget review. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second, any further discussion up here? Anybody from the public? This is a money issue, so.
Professor Kine.
Yes.
Freddie.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a somewhat unrelated, but somewhat related. Uh, do we know what Caltrans is going to do about those, what do you call them, piano stripes? Are they, are they?
It isn't really a counting question.
Sure. Um, they ground them down, the next plan is to have greens, just a solid green area over the intersections. Um, we are having a meeting with Caltrans next week, in which, um, any disappointment with which, what has been done may be expressed in our, at our meeting with them. So, um, those council members that are going to attend that meeting, be ready.
They're not, they're not planning to have the piano stripes at every driveway, or are they?
No, we are not going to have piano stripes every, actually, the piano stripes are gone, they're absolutely gone. The green solid is going to be at intersections, but not in driveways.
Okay.
Who's on the Caltrans?
Uh, Greta and Larry. And Larry.
Larry, so you'll make sure Caltrans is.
And I think it's next week, and I can't.
Fully aware of the frustration.
Did you know the one it is?
Again, the rest of you can show up, which have to be the fly on the wall.
So, uh, did we, we had a vote, um?
Yeah, we did. So I guess now we're at, uh, city council committee, boards and agencies. Now we're there.
Now we're there.
So, does anybody have anything?
I do, but Madge wants to go, so I got to wait.
I don't care, any order. Uh, I'll try to make this really short. EDFC met on February fourteenth, and they've got new C D F I funding for loans as well as for staff.
On the fifth.
Um, on February twenty-sixth, they presented something to the board of supervisors regarding broadband, and I didn't follow what that was going to be, but they're, they are actively trying to keep broadband on the agenda. And they have a new website, and they have been, um, receiving loan inquiries, uh, which is an improvement, because for a while, they were running.
It might be their.
So they really have a lot of money to lend, and they want qualified businesses to come forward and, and, um, take advantage of that. So that's, uh, E D F C. Emswa is, um, we met on February twenty-first, uh, with several new members, Jim Brown is now the chair, Jessica, I don't have her last name, from Fort Bragg, Dan Jardy from the Board of Supes, and, um, the, um, Dan Jardy and John McCowen are going to ask the county to have them be an ad hoc committee to work with the cities, and in particular, um, the reason for that is because we do not have a general manager and see, uh, we have not been able to replace our general manager position at, at Mendu Recycle. C N S, which is the outfit that services, um, U C A, and I think part of the county, has proposed to take over a lot of the duties that Emswa used to do in-house. And, um, at this point, that's like a, a ball that's been thrown in the air, and we all have to do some research and find out what the implications are, um, or, you know, whether, whether some of the duties of Emswa are going to fall into cracks, um, and what is the Emswa board, um, position on the C N S proposal. So, um, I'm hoping that the two county reps are going to kind of take a certain amount of leadership in that, because they have staff that can help them. The one other thing that came up at that meeting was the Cold Creek compost request for tipping increase, tipping fee increases, that has been handled through the four different jurisdictions and will be on our agenda in March.
Yes.
To, it's a very small adjustment to the users, it's extremely small, but, uh, it's a pass through, um, the Cold Creek tipping fees through solid waste of funds. Those are my, oh, and I, I guess, I already, did we already report on the, uh, E D F C Economic Summit? Did we do that at our last meeting?
I think so.
The newspaper did, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
We talked.
It was on January thirty-first, so we.
You just said that it was coming on the twenty.
I haven't heard a count.
I haven't heard a council before.
That's right, we didn't have a, earlier, so just, just so you know, there were apparently 140 attendees representing all sorts of businesses and agencies and public entities like us. And they are at the very beginning stage of developing strategies for economic development countywide, but that was the, sort of, the kickoff meeting to begin that process, and there will be more later.
Alright, I'll keep mine short, three things. MTA met today here in Willets at 1:30, and our chairman of the board is leaving us and going to San Francisco to serve on, for their transit authority there, and so there's gonna be an opening. If anybody's interested in applying, you'd be appointed by the Board of Supervisors, and it's an inland position. So we're looking for a community member to fill that position, I just put it out there for that. And then a second thing is, today we allocated an additional 60,000 plus toward the goal of replacing six gas vehicles to electric vehicles to reduce our carbon footprint. Each, each year, we, MTA sets aside as much money as we can afford, this year it was $60,000, in hopes that we, we'll, we can build that fund and find matching grant money so that we can replace those six vehicles that we've identified with electrical vehicles. And then the third item was, there's an unmet needs list with MTA, and each member of the board is able to put items on there, I have quite a few on there. And one of the items I have on there was that there's been a request from the community that their service to the high school, that they extend it further down the road, but they can't provide specifically a bus stop for the high school. So what they're going to be providing is called a pool stop for the, for the use of the city pool. So they're expecting, it's, it's moved its way up the list to priority number two. So the city should expect that MTA will be reaching out to both the city staff and the school district to start working on how we can make that happen, because in order for the bus to stop there, it's going to have to go through the parking lot at the high school, which could prove to be challenging. So anyway, there's gonna be some talks and some ideas on how we can make that happen. And then I know we said there's only three, but I wanna let the community know about the bus stop that we lost over by, at the south end of town, that people were, we had some people, folks here that were upset about it. And I guess Dusty worked with them, and we got the encroachment permit, and that the landing pad is going to be built very soon, and there will be a new MTA stop. If you go down the road, is it Alder Court?
Yes.
Go down Alder Court, and there's like that telephone pole in the middle of an island right there, and it's just right there on the south side of that little island will be the new MTA spot for those folks that were in need of a, a stop there.
Jerry Rocco was the one that worked with them on that.
Yeah, they, they said to send their appreciations, so, yeah, thank you. And Willets has quite a few, quite a list of unmet needs, and if the community has any other unmet needs, please let me know, I'm happy to add more.
Greta?
Do you have any?
No. Well, I jumped in earlier and just talked about, I've got Lincoln City Friday and Monday, I believe, I have Laffco, so I'll let you guess, I'll next time. That's it, I think. Any Gooden Welfare?
Oh, I just mentioned that I, both Jerry and I attended Leadership Mendocino on February 8th at the Senior Center, and they had quite an extensive program about the state of health in our county. Not too much of it was broken down by cities, but, but the county is not high on our ratings for all sorts of things like childhood obesity and lack of dental care and all sorts of things. So the, I, I just thought it was very interesting, and I'm glad that Leadership Mendocino is doing that kind of, of work. And we both mentioned what was going on in the city of Willets, so.
I do have a Gooden Welfare, I was alerted that there are four citizens who are regularly picking up trash on Main Street. They kind of do a morning thing, and I just wanted to say thank you to those folks, I don't have their names, but we appreciate your efforts.
Madge, you have one more thing?
Yeah, one other thing is that WEL is in the second round of review from the Community Foundation. We're hoping to get a grant from them to continue and expand our Paint the Town project, and we've been talking with Stephanie and are gonna probably bring something up, hopefully in March, to get some encroachment permits lined up with Caltrans, so we can paint some of the things that are in there right of way. And a lot of that'll depend on whether we get the grant or not, but we wanna be moving forward, whether or not we get the grant, so we'll be keeping you advised.
You wanna talk about the bridge?
Oh.
Your bridge project?
Well, that's one of the, that's one of the projects, is that we want to be able to paint some of the concrete, what do you, you know, railings on the bridges that are along Main Street. So we need permission from Caltrans and from the city. So the city would have to be the one to apply for that from Caltrans. We're, we're preparing our documentation to bring to Stephanie, to then bring here, and then she can carry it from there.
So, so just like the, they brought forth the plan for the, for the garbage cans? I would bring that to you, so you could see that and decide whether or not you want it to be.
And the utility boxes as the other.
I was, tomorrow I've been invited to speak at the Agriculture and Business Coalition at the Fairgrounds. I did read something, I don't think they're real pro the Great River Trail, based on, it sounds like they, it has to do with property rights, there's some other members. And I just read that in a clip, Devin Jones, the Agriculture Commission, I guess, Commissioner, he's on that board or chairs it or something. So I asked him for a little, you know, they, they wanna know what's happening in Willets and what we project, and an update on our bypass, et cetera. And so I'll be speaking to that, but I, when I said, what are you guys all about, I kinda got the, they wanna preserve their, I guess they're agriculture and business and fielders exchange folks, so, so just a thought. That's all I got.
I was meeting with the mayor of Ukiah today, and she was talking about their Rails to Trails hopes. And I was quick to let them know that, well, we've got ours going on. And good luck.
Alright, well, I guess, motion to adjourn?
Did you have an announcement about airport day?
Not just that.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
It's a move?
Thank you.
Thank you, staff, for cutting it out.